Good morning. I will now call the May 3, 2023 San Diego County Board of Supervisors Land Use Meeting, Insanitation District Meeting to Order. A reminder, according to Board Rules and Procedures, audience members should not whistle, clap feet, or anything that disrupts the proceedings. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chairwoman Vargas. Supervisor Anderson.
Right.
Supervisor Desmond.
Here.
Vice Chair Lawson Reamer.
Yes.
And Chairwoman Vargas.
Vargas here. We will be proceeding with our close session report from yesterday. Oh, no, there's no close session report, sorry, not yet. Proceeding with non-agenda public communications is an opportunity for the public to address the Board on subject matters within the Board's jurisdiction, but not an item on today's agenda. The only action that the Board may take is a referral to the Chief Administrative Officer. A reminder, according to Rule 4, members of the public that are non-English speaking and need interpretation assistance will get twice the allotted time for their comments, which is four minutes. To better facilitate the meeting, we will have two speakers in person, five speakers via phone, and the rest of the non-agenda public communication will be heard at the close of today's meeting. Clerk, can you please call the speakers?
Thank you, Chairwoman Vargas. We have sixteen total requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda, three individuals in person, and thirteen requesting to speak, thirteen people requesting to speak by phone. For those that have requested to speak via phone, if you could please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We will begin with the in-person speakers, as your name is called. If you could please come forward and stand against the east wall under the murals until it is your turn to speak. You will then have two minutes to address the Board, and I'd like to invite forward the following individuals: Gail Reich, Summer Light, and Bryant Rumbaugh.
Okay. Summer Light, the San Diego Board of Supervisors voted to spend $350,000 to have the San Marcos landfill blend in with the surrounding scenery. Union Tribune stated, "When a landfill is capped, the county maintains it but cannot always spend the time and money to restore it to its natural beauty." In this case, the county reached an agreement with the city of San Marcos to restore the habitat. 2012 Union Tribune article titled "County Reclaims Landfill for Wildlife Habitat." Previous landfill supervisor stated, "They did a good job. Each year, it gets better as more plants mature and animals come through." He made it a point to provide water for the rare-end endangered species. Page two. "About three years ago, the wildlife habitat took a turn for the worst. We saw a mountain of asphalt brought in. Landfill reports document workers putting out poison. The beautiful endangered kangaroo rat has completely disappeared. Road runners were frantic and left the day the asphalt was dumped on buffer land near Elfin Forest Homes." Page three. "Asphalt was dumped next to wetlands. Quail have disappeared. Weed abatement is done now with an army of seven trucks and heavy equipment instead of a simple mow. Our community asks is that someone from the Board get the management back on track so the landfill is managed as a beautiful wildlife preserve, as legally agreed on and funded for."
Hello, my name is Gail Reich. Thank you for this chance to speak in regard to the San Marcos landfill. Tara Lawson Reamer, as our district representation, we appreciate and need your environmental advocacy on this matter. Each year, thousands of dollars are raised by the Elfin Forest community in support of open space wildlife. The Board of Supervisors is in the position to help ensure current land management practices, responsibly care for the once-beautiful native habitat on the San Marcos landfill. It was legally agreed on to have this landfill be a wildlife preserve. The Board voted to do this, and much effort and expense has gone into creating it. Yet, asphalt was applied on the buffer land without the public knowing in advance and without advance opportunities for the public to comment on these plans. It is misleading for the DPW to estimate that the removal of the asphalt costs over $200,000, when San Alejo Hills and Elfin Forest communities have secured an official written bid of $10,841 to get the asphalt removed. Please review the documents handed to you by Summer Light and hold the DPW accountable for the removal of the asphalt and the restoration of these lands. Thank you.
All right. Bryant Rumbaugh again. Jim, did I just hear that correct? $200,000 for $10,000? I mean, I'll have to look at the video. I did look at the video last night after I got off work. I do appreciate you not abusing a woman, okay? That bodes well for the Sheriff's Department, it really does. Continuing from yesterday, you know, actually, I did take the elevator up this morning again, hoping to run into you, bud, but I actually ran into David. He's actually a superintendent on this job, your modernization here. You know, I don't know the exact work scope, but I know a whole hell of a lot about construction. And he said it's been going on for four years. You know, Turner Construction, I want to just talk about it real. I hope that they're not doing the fireproofing of your structural I-beams, because they did that prior to 9/11, okay, just a couple of years, and they actually removed those same I-beams shortly after. Now, when it comes to, you know, us as a society, what I will say is that people are always going to be in it for themselves. There is a degree of selfishness that comes with our human experience here. Now, what I want to see is, there's not a person in this room that can, should be able to look themselves in the mirror and say that this is the best of what humanity can offer. At this point, like I told you, we have many tools at our disposal. When you guys, when your primary function is to take these state dollars, when the state dollars is to have these dollars printed from the federal government, who gets it on loan from the Federal Reserve, it creates all these problems. The homelessness, watching the people yesterday talk about that Fletcher thing, pretty much how you guys are going to act on it. It was really interesting watching the people have their sides, but everyone's got their own motives, their own motives behind their point. And whatever, man, I'll be, I'll be, I'll be reaching out to you soon, okay, bud?
Thank you. We will now hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. I'd like to remind the callers that they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we will begin with our first caller.
Consuelo. I first wanted to let Queen Bee know that this is not Tijuana, this is San Diego, and you are not psychic. I was not off-topic. You didn't let me finish because you didn't like what I was saying. You are obviously so bought and paid for. At that last Sandag meeting, I saw how Icarata, or whatever the hell his name was, was petting you like his little lapdog. Disgusting. The people are starting to pay attention, and they are fed up with politicians like you, Juanera tyrant. Being present and informed of what's happening in local government is the most important thing we should all be doing. In every county and state, especially now during this time in history, they thrive on a distracted and divided people, a people not paying attention to them. Don't you get that by now? Society has become so complacent and careless, trusting these unethical corrupt politicians, so much so that they keep voting for their oppressors to office. If you're overwatching these political clowns and stop buying tickets to their circus, get a grip. Your life, whether you're just surviving or thriving, is entirely your responsibility, not a politician's. We learn from history that we have not learned from history. Excellent presentation to Summer Light.
Thank you. We'll go to the next speaker.
Good morning. I will now call the May 3, 2023 San Diego County Board of Supervisors Land Use Meeting and Sanitation District Meeting to Order. A reminder, according to board rules and procedures, audience members should not whistle, clap feet, or anything that disrupts the proceedings. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chairwoman Vargas. Supervisor Anderson.
Right.
Supervisor Desmond.
Here.
Vice Chair Lawson Reimer.
Yes.
And Chairwoman Vargas.
Vargas here. We will be proceeding with our close session report from yesterday. Oh, no, there's no close session report, sorry, not yet. Proceed with non-agenda public communications is an opportunity for the public to address the board on subject matters within the board's jurisdiction, but not an item on today's agenda. The only action that the board may take is a referral to the chief administrative officer. A reminder, according to Rule 4, members of the public that are non-English speaking and need interpretation assistance will get twice the allotted time for their comments, which is four minutes. To better facilitate the meeting, we will have two speakers in person, five speakers via phone, and the rest of the non-agenda public communication will be heard at the close of today's meeting. Clerk, can you please call the speakers?
Thank you, Chairwoman Vargas. We have sixteen total requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda, three individuals in person, and thirteen requesting to speak, thirteen people requesting to speak by phone. For those that have requested to speak via phone, if you could please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We will begin with the in-person speakers as your name is called. If you could please come forward and stand against the east wall under the murals until it is your turn to speak. You will then have two minutes to address the board, and I'd like to invite forward
Okay. Summer Light, "The San Diego Board of Supervisors voted to spend $350,000 to have the San Marcos landfill blend in with the surrounding scenery. Union Tribune stated, 'When a landfill is capped, the county maintains it but cannot always spend the time and money to restore it to its natural beauty.' In this case, the county reached an agreement with the city of San Marcos to restore the habitat. 2012 Union Tribune article titled 'County Reclaims Landfill for Wildlife Habitat.' Previous landfill supervisor stated they did a good job. Each year, it gets better as more plants mature and animals come through. He made it a point to provide water for the rare-end endangered species." Page 2. "About three years ago, the wildlife habitat took a turn for the worst. We saw a mountain of asphalt brought in. Landfill reports document workers putting out poison. The beautiful endangered kangaroo rat has completely disappeared. Road runners were frantic and left the day the asphalt was dumped on buffer land near Elfin Forest Homes." Page 3. "Asphalt was dumped next to wetlands. Quail have disappeared. Weed abatement is done now with an army of seven trucks and heavy equipment instead of a simple mow. Our community ask is that someone from the board get the management back on track so the landfill is managed as a beautiful wildlife preserve as legally agreed on and funded
Hello, my name is Gail Reich. Thank you for this chance to speak in regard to the San Marcos landfill. Tara Lawson Reimer, "As our district representation, we appreciate and need your environmental advocacy on this matter. Each year, thousands of dollars are raised by the Elfin Forest community in support of open space wildlife. The Board of Supervisors is in the position to help ensure current land management practices, responsibly care for the once-beautiful native habitat on the San Marcos landfill. It was legally agreed on to have this landfill be a wildlife preserve. The Board voted to do this, and much effort and expense has gone into creating it. Yet asphalt was applied on the buffer land without the public knowing in advance and without advance opportunities for the public to comment on these plans. It is misleading for the DPW to estimate that the removal of the asphalt costs over $200,000 when San Jose Hills and Elfin Forest communities have secured an official written bid of $10,841 to get the asphalt removed. Please review the documents handed to you by Summer Light and hold the DPW accountable for the removal of the asphalt and the restoration of these lands. Thank you."
All right, Bryant Rumbaugh again. Jim, did I just hear that correct? $200,000 for $10,000? I mean, I'll have to look at the video. I did look at the video last night after I got off work. I do appreciate you not abusing a woman, okay? That bodes well for the Sheriff's Department, it really does. Continuing from yesterday, you know, actually, I did take the elevator up this morning again, hoping to run into you, bud, but I actually ran into David. He's actually a superintendent on this job, your modernization here. You know, I don't know the exact work scope, but I know a whole hell of a lot about construction. And he said it's been going on for four years. You know, Turner Construction, I want to just talk about it real. I hope that they're not doing the fireproofing of your structural I-beams because they did that prior to 9/11, okay, just a couple of years, and they actually removed those same I-beams shortly after. Now, when it comes to, you know, us as a society, what I will say is that people are always going to be in it for themselves. There is a degree of selfishness that comes with our human experience here. Now, what I want to see is, there's not a person in this room that can, should be able to look themselves in the mirror and say that this is the best of what humanity can offer. At this point, like I told you, we have many tools at our disposal. When you guys, when your primary function is to take these state dollars, when the state dollars is to have these dollars printed from the federal government, who gets it on loan from the Federal Reserve, it creates all these problems. The homelessness, watching the people yesterday talk about that Fletcher thing, pretty much how you guys are going to act on it. It was really interesting watching the people have their sides, but everyone's got their own motives, their own motives behind their point. And whatever, man, I'll be, I'll be, I'll be reaching out to you soon, okay, bud?
I appreciate it. Thank you. We will now hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. I'd like to remind the callers that they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we will begin with our first caller.
Consuelo. "I first wanted to let Queen Bee know that this is not Tijuana, this is San Diego, and you are not psychic. I was not off-topic. You didn't let me finish because you didn't like what I was saying. You are obviously so bought and paid for. At that last Sandag meeting, I saw how Icarata, whatever the hell his name was, was petting you like his little lapdog. Disgusting. The people are starting to pay attention, and they are fed up with politicians like you, Yonetta tyrant. Being present and informed of what's happening in local government is the most important thing we should all be doing. In every county and state, especially now during this time in history, they thrive on a distracted and divided people, a people not paying attention to them. Don't you get that by now? Society has become so complacent and careless, trusting these unethical corrupt politicians, so much so that they keep voting for their oppressors to office. If you're overwatching these political clowns and stop buying tickets to their circus, get a grip. Your life, whether you're just surviving or thriving, is entirely your responsibility, not a politician's. We learn from history that we have not learned from history." Excellent presentation to Summer Light.
Thank you. We'll go to the next speaker.
Hi, you should listen, Summer Light, that asphalt looks disgusting. The housing market is tough, but the city's residential tenant protection ordinance won't protect residents or prevent homelessness. Most lower-income residents or renters are accepted. It will do little to stop the wave of displacement, which is a politic term for homeless ex-renters. The well-to-do would mostly get any of the Udi payments if they're pretty much guaranteed their front-of-line access to available housing, and the poor are mostly accepted. The ordinance excludes from restricted conditions and payments second-age renters, renters in affordable housing, most older housing, in transient and tourist hotels, short-term residences, extended care facilities, licensed elderly care facilities, places where the tenant shares bathroom or kitchen with the landlord, and dormitories where kinders are not. If the renter does get protection, the landlord pays his costs for waves what he owes. The ordinance cites housing costs, including high inflation, food, and transportation costs. Aren't landlords responsible for these any more than you guys? The proposal says the landlord may evict summer renters by serving three-day notice. What if he or she has five kids? Can he get, he or she get more time or more larger move-outs? It's a bad ordinance, and with the city closing Golden Hole, too, you need to prepare for more homeless and hire the homeless. Thank you."
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Diane Grace, and I am a mother, a grandmother, and have served on many youth boards over the years. Yesterday, I spoke about how disheartening for parents and grandparents that some of the supervisors appear to push marijuana businesses on us, whether we want them or not. Parents feel almost defenseless and disregarded and abandoned in the difficult task of raising youth and guiding them today. I spoke about a presentation I watched from Bertha Madras, professor of psychobiology Harvard Medical School, who also directs the Laboratory of Addiction Neurobiology at McLean Hospital, a Harvard Medical School hospital affiliate. Dr. Madras is highly respected in the national public health world for her ongoing research on marijuana's impact of the brain. Her research has focused on the effects of marijuana on the developing adolescent brain and on the adult brain to eliminate, to illuminate why early drug initiators, our teens, are more susceptible to addiction, cognitive impairment, and other adverse effects. She has received awards from the National Institute of Health, America Academy of Addiction Psychiatry, and others for her research-seeking answers for the high addiction rates of young people to marijuana. As a parent and grandparent, I asked the Board of Supervisors to set aside the idea of more marijuana businesses in our unincorporated areas while the research continues to build about this unfolding new epidemic. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
Barbara Gordon. "I am a public health educator, and mental health and addiction often goes hand in hand. We cannot effectively address one without addressing the other. May is Mental Health Month, so it is a good time to bring awareness to the relationship between drug use and mental health challenges, particularly associated with marijuana use. As a society, we have normalized and commercialized the use of marijuana, which has greatly decreased the perception of harm. People with mental illness often face greater challenges in dealing with addiction and the resources to quit. The overwhelming consensus from mental health professionals that marijuana is not helpful with people with mental illness. Using marijuana can directly worsen symptoms of anxiety, depression, schizophrenia through its actions on the brain. This month is a great opportunity to educate mental health providers to refer patients to an addiction program and encourage no use as part of their overall mental health treatment. As the board looks to permit and add more marijuana businesses, I would urge you to consider the relationship between marijuana use and good mental health. Thank you for letting me speak."
Thank you. We'll go to the next speaker.
Hi, Kevin Stevenson. Yes, I would like to actually take a moment to thank my supervisor, Jim Desmond, for voting to call for a special election for District 4. I don't tend to give Jim Desmond a lot of credit for a lot of things because he and I disagree on most issues, but I believe in being fair and giving people credit for doing the right thing. I'm glad that the vote was unanimous. I'm glad to see that both sides of the political spectrum are in agreement on letting the people of District 4 decide who should succeed Nathan Fletcher when he does resign on May 15. Ideally, I would like him to resign earlier, but it doesn't look like that's going to happen. But I want to use that as a transition to an ongoing theme I like to talk about, which is misinformation, because some people, Karl and Mayo, are claiming that he is not going to resign on May 15 and that they're going to have to do a recall effort, which, Karl, I'd like to know, what are you basing this off of? Where are you getting this information? You know, KUSI likes to claim that it holds politicians accountable, but interestingly, they only hold politicians "accountable," quote-unquote, when they have a D next to their name, when they're a Republican, they just kind of let whatever they say float and not go challenged? You know, it's like when they get on Todd Gloria about homelessness, which, to be fair, Todd Gloria has failed on the issue of homelessness, but then they listen to Kevin Faulkner, even though Kevin Faulkner is the one who saw the homelessness crisis really take off in 2020. But Kevin Faulkner is A, a Republican, and B, a KUSI contributor, so they're not going to hold him accountable for it.
Thank you. Your time is up. And Chairwoman Vargas, that concludes the request for non-agenda public communication this morning. Again, for all remaining speakers, all the remaining speakers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes, statements, and proceedings for the regular meeting of April 5, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Thank you. Is there a second? Second, we have a motion and a second. Can we please vote?
And Chairwoman Vargas, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors who are present voting aye.
Okay. The consent calendar, we're going to proceed with the formation of our consent calendar. Item 125 in Sanitation District Agenda, item 1. Members of the public will be able to comment on the consent calendar after those supervisors pull the items they would like for discussion. Would any of my colleagues like to pull anything? Supervisor Anderson?
No.
Supervisor Desmond?
I have a comment to make on item 5 on consent. This is, and I appreciate staff for all the hard work that's been done on this so far, and I know there's going to be more work to be done, but under our current policy, we essentially recognize two types of public events, those that are held on county park property. There's for-profit events and nonprofit events. And, for example, the profit events, the organizers, they have to pay a fee of 10% of gross sales, which is good when we have the events out here on the front of the county administration building that helps bring in revenue. Nonprofits, they have to pay 5% of gross sales. So I'm glad to see that break there, but I think, you know, differentiating between the profits and nonprofits, I think we need to do more because primarily in the unincorporated areas, a lot of these events that happen and take place, in particular, I'm talking about Valley Center rodeo, that's run by volunteers entirely. It's not, it's a bunch of people from the community that put this on, and they're not professional event people at all. And as much as the people there were in favor of, and so was I, that the, when the county came in and took over their park system because they were kind of getting, they were getting behind in just keeping their parks up. But unfortunately, that came with the county rules and regulations, and unfortunately, they had to cancel the rodeo this year because they just couldn't keep up with the, you know, more onerous restrictions or the processes that we have in place for on parks. So I'm not saying that we want to reduce our liability, we want to make sure everybody's safe and things like that, but I'm asking if we can waive that 5% of gross fees for the nonprofits. When the volunteers in Valley Center found out that they were going to have to monitor, you know, every booth, whatever it was that were selling, every food item or whatever, they just didn't have the resources to do that. And we want to make sure that these community events still are able to take place, still can be safe. So I'm asking, you know, maybe there's requirements that we can be more relaxed on without, you know, increasing liability, lightings, decorations, fencing, COVID-19, those things hopefully will be going away soon. So in doing so, I'm just asking that staff goes and look into this and see how we can keep those community events going in a safe manner, but would not overburden them with fees and things like that. We don't want to lose money either, but overburdening them so that they just can't do it anymore. So that's, I would appreciate the support of my colleagues, and hopefully we can keep those events in the unincorporated areas still going. Hopefully, next year, we can get that rodeo back on track again. So, thank you very much.
Vice Chair Lawson Reimer?
Thank you. No items to pull, just a couple of comments. No, first of all, just on my colleague's item number 5. I'm happy to support. I think I just want to flag for staff not to change anything. I think it's great as moving forward, just making sure that as you do move forward this, that we stay to the intent that I think is really clear from my colleague's proposal, which is really for the nonprofits, the community-focused organizations, and that we don't create any loopholes that would like allow large for-profits to sort of hide behind community groups. You know, you always have the potential for that when you create different tiered pricing schemes. Definitely think it's a good idea, but let's not let big companies, you know, use community groups as a facade to get a, kind of to cheat the system. So that's just one thing I just wanted to put out there. We're not, we're doing a good job on that already, but want to make sure that that continues to be centered. And then on item 8, this is just awesome. So thank you to Brian and your team. This is really exciting, the rehabilitation project for the Tijuana River Valley. I, oh, that's a discussion. Oh, sorry. Darn, I was so excited about it. I get to say thank you twice. Okay, so only have a comment I want to, it's very exciting.
My favorite topic. So yes, all right, so we're good, right?
Yes, we're good.
All right. All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Oh, wait, I need public comment. So let's have public comment. We're getting too excited this morning, everyone. Just want to do the people's work. All right.
Thank you, Chairwoman Vargas. I'd just also like to note for the record, the consent calendar includes the items on the Sanitation District Agenda as well as approval of minutes from the April 5, 2023 meeting. With that, we have eight total requests to speak on the items on the consent calendar, one individual in person, and seven requesting to speak by phone. For any members that of the public that have requested to speak on items on the consent calendar, if you could please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speaker. I'd like to invite forward Robert Gurman. You have two minutes to address the board, and if you could please state your name for the audio record.
Hi, Robert Gurman, item 4, I think it is. Carlsbad Airport, yeah, Carlsbad Airport is the county's commercial airport. Space is definitely available at Carlsbad Airport, per the sign. This is the entrance to the airport lobby on a busy Sunday. Don't worry about being late for your plane, there's nobody at the ticket counter. And, well, let's see, I'm all messed up. Don't worry about being late for your plane, there are no departures. Don't worry about being late to pick up your friends and families, there's no arrivals. That's the ticket counter, dust off the counter before you lean on it. Then I went to, yes, we have no, we have no, we have customs and border patrol, only the door is locked. But here's the arrivals and departures. I mean, it's a ghost town, guys, and this is on Sunday. And I've been up there three times taking the pictures, and it hasn't changed, except we put up a art structure in the lobby. I guess to the varmints and the people that are occupying this building. Carlsbad has more rental cars than airplanes at the airport, and that's another slide. Obviously, I didn't time this very well, but you'll have to bear with me here. The slides speak for themselves. Although I will throw in here somewhere that the restaurant has very good chili and a pretty good Bloody Mary. But, I mean, ladies and gentlemen, we really got to look at our aviation system here. San Diego County's, let's see, we are at, the gate is at a city airport with a proper Prop 65 posting for toxic leaded avgas. With the grant money from the childhood lead poisoning grant, maybe the county could get postings at all of our airport. Whoa, I really wasted my time. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we will hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. Again, I'd like to remind the callers that they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we will begin with our first caller.
Good morning. My name is John Bottorff with CleanEarthForKids.org. We ask the county to stop, take action and stop the sale, use, and storage of leaded aviation fuel at Palomar and all airports in the county. Lead is a toxic heavy metal with no safe level. It accumulates a poison that does not break down the environment and is especially toxic to children and unborn babies. It damages their brains and nervous systems, lowers IQ scores, harms muscle coordination, speech, language, and causes behavior problems. Leaded aviation fuel used by small planes and helicopters are responsible for almost 70% of airborne lead emissions in the US. They are the single largest source of lead pollution in the air in the US. According to EPA data, general aircraft at Palomar Airport dumps over 700 pounds of toxic lead at the air every year. Lesby Field dumps over 1,100 pounds, and Ramona over 600 pounds. That is over 2,400 pounds of lead in our air every year from county airports, and there is no safe level of lead. A 2013 San Diego Air Pollution District study showed that Palomar Airport exceeded national ambient air quality standards for lead. That was 10 years ago. A study done by the county of Santa Clara found children living within one-half miles of their airport had lead levels nearly twice that of kids at Flint, Michigan at the height of their lead crisis. And Clara has stopped leaded fuel at their airport, this has the city of Santa Monica, the city of Long Beach, and Van Nuys Airport in LA, have started their process to get the lead out. County must take action to get the lead out of county airports and notify those living and working near the airports there being poisoned by lead, and update the county health department website to show airports as a source of lead. Unleaded fuel is available now. Please protect our kids and immediately stop the sale, use, and storage of leaded aviation fuel. There is more information on the dangers of lead and alternatives. Please go to our Team 5, hit the "Let Out" page on our website. Again, unleaded aviation fuel.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker. Caller, you've been unmuted. You can go ahead and start your comments. We'll come back to you.
Paul Henken. Exploring options means the public should be weighing in. So why is it on consent calendar where speaking time is limited by the number of items on it? Thank you, Jim, for bringing this item forward. While a 5% of gross sales is only one of the cities being looked at as a potential source of revenue for upkeep of parks, I do not favor simply eliminating it. I would prefer option B of recommendation two. Either and/or reduce parks and rec public rental agreement requirements to the extent Either and/or reduce parks and rec public rental agreement requirements to the extent feasible. My inclination would be to limit bookkeeping to sales over a certain amount, or turn over a copy of the receipt to the county unless it's due to bookkeeping. And perhaps this is an opportunity to dignify homeless or low-income people with meaningful work. I think we can do without COVID-19 or any other number, by the way, of fees. And I hope these related to labor standards do not apply to outside help like caterers at a birthday party or something. These are only my ideas from the limited data in the board letter. Clearly, there should be a public discussion, not only including event organizers, but also attendee or vendor input could be valuable as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
If fee limit controls and signs costing $7,600. And Joe, I finally got to see the Traffic Advisory Committee, Justin Schloss, live in person. I found out that Justin is also a chairperson on the City of San Tito Salary Setting Advisory Committee. We decided that those council members deserve a 5% raise. Item two, where's Victoria? Don't love these new $620,000 sidewalks on Apple Street in Spring Valley. This is truly a miracle, though, that I can actually support an item. However, I disagree when this item says that this project encourages non-motorized transportation. Sorry, but anyone trying to traverse Spring Valley by foot won't live long. Item three, is $485,000 in federal debt dollars via community development log grant, mostly to plant trees at Lamar County Park in Spring Valley? I'm not a fan of a perimeter fence before the park. Item four, good to see Gurman on it. They're the owner of the Eighth Airport, or the state and federal government, as they provide all debt dollars for operation and maintenance. The county wants their share by renegotiating the lease with Palomar Airport in order to assure a higher payment matching the inflation market to an extra $409,000. And item five, the county can select a rental fee plus 1% on gross sales from for-profit events held on county land. I do agree, Jim, that the 5% fee on nonprofits can be eliminated. But the funny thing in this item is when it suggests that many nonprofits struggle with their events. Reality is that chief supervisors give out thousands and thousands of the people's money to who knows how many politically friendly nonprofits every Tuesday meeting. Yesterday was over $1.8 million thrown out. And those rodeo fools thought government would help them. Sorry, that's the real cheat, the system itself. Sad, but true. So if you want an event, do it yourself, DIY, that's the way to live. No, no to everything but you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
You know who I am. So your sewer rates, it's quite interesting. We have a governor who thinks that we live in a state that is not high tax. Then I wonder if that's why you guys love implementing and making higher taxes and rates and fees for people because you think that that is not high? I'm not sure, but nobody should consent to having their sewer rates increased that much, especially when they're being given the sewer water back to them. Reducing speeds and all waste stops, I'm not sure how that and your traffic advisory committee causes less DHDs because people will be on the road more, right? So won't it cause more? And Sandag, I mean, they say we must stop driving, right? I mean, we have to do everything we can. It's not just the EV cars, like we have to make it so people don't drive. So all of the things that you're doing are quite well in line with that. And your sidewalks, love that because that supports your climate action plan to encourage non-motorized transport, just like Sandag, right? And I'm not sure how the parking lot improvements, if you're doing landscape, that's not a parking lot, okay? So you're doing the land around it, so don't try and pretend that that's what's going on. And Robert, and the lead mitigation for the airports, you guys had an agenda item yesterday talking about saving kids from lead. I mean, are you going to do something there or you just want to increase your rent? You don't really need to worry about the lead. And then these events, it's funny because it's like, we pay for these parks, right? And then we have to pay to use them again? It's like, so if I want to have a party at my house, do I need to rent my house out? I feel like that's what you guys are going to start doing. Nobody needs to come to you guys in order to hold an event. You just want to get your money in it. And like Tru said, you guys give out eons of money, so much frickin' money to all these people when you could then go and say, we're not going to charge you a fee. How about you do that instead? And then you can use that grant money and put it towards that. You're selective on who you want to help. And why was it during COVID you waived the fees? That doesn't make any sense. I thought people weren't even...
Thank you. Your time is up. And to note for the record, that was Audra. We will go to our next speaker.
My name is Billy Wagner. I'm with the Valley Center Stampede Rodeo. Our event was scheduled for the 26th and 27th of this month. It was canceled due to the fact that the policy change made it financially unattainable for us to move forward. It wasn't just the finances. We had a contract that we negotiated back in August with Parks and Race Ret. It was based on a five-year contract that we had previously used in the past. It was a flat rate for the use of the park. We felt that this was a fair, and it helped us with determining whether or not our event can move forward due to the fact that the flat rate would be taken out. Now that with the gross 5% rule, we would have to manage more volunteers to enforce this rule. It would take a lot of man-hours with our bookkeepers, and it would be a burden upon our vendors. Our vendors aren't vendors that go to Elmar Fair and travel the country, you know, 365 days a year. They're based on mom and pops. They're backyard people, arts and crafts people, stuff like that. And we would have to then go after them for this 5%. The other thing that was making it difficult for us was the requirements. We are a 47-acre park with a six-foot fence completely around the perimeter. We would have to have 60 security guards to maintain a perimeter security. Our event is free. People can walk in and out of it as they wish. I don't know why we would be securing the perimeter of our park. At some point, common sense would need to kick in regarding this policy that changed. Our event was the biggest in Valley Center. It's not going on this year. Our high school students will not be receiving scholarships. Our queens won't be participating in their event. And it's troubling for me that we don't know the future of our event. I appreciate your time today, and I hope that you guys can come to a resolution regarding some of the policies. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chairwoman Vargas, that concludes public comment on the items on the consent calendar.
Chair, can I ask just a quick question here of staff? We're hearing a lot about the low lead and the leaded gas in the aviation industry. And with the FAA, my understanding is I think they have to get rid of the leaded fuel by 2030. I'm not sure with the phasing in program. So could you, can I ask, maybe staff get back or look into that and get to our board offices and let us all know, and maybe even the callers and people talking about it? Let them know that here's what the FAA says, and we're, I'm assuming we're not fighting the FAA?
No, we're not. We actually sent recent correspondence as well to check on the status, and that's correct. Supervisor is that it's 2030, and we'll be happy to follow up with all board offices and the public.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe we can actually do like a public information on our website so that people could just look at it, whatever you share with us, that way the public can also see it.
Happy to.
All right, fantastic. All right, seeing no other comments from my colleagues, please vote.
And Chairwoman Vargas, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors who are present voting aye.
Fantastic, all right. So for discussions, item 6 to 12, for the purpose of this meeting, item number 12 will be withdrawn from the agenda. We will still hear public comment on this item, but there's no, there will be no presentation or board discussion, but I want to make sure that people who were here to speak on this item don't have to come back again and give you an opportunity to share your comments on that, okay? All right, first, we're going to go with item number six. It's set hearing for June 14, Sweetwater Regional Park approval acquisition of approximately 190 acres of open space land, the New Ranch Land Company, and sequel exceptions. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the county team for a presentation. Do you have a presentation? Okay. All right, seeing that we don't have any presentations. Okay, is there a second? Okay, and then let me go ahead and have a public comment.
Thank you, Chairwoman Vargas. We have six total requests to speak, all coming via phone. I'd also like to note for the record, we did receive one e-comment on this item, which was in opposition. For the members of the public that have requested to speak on this item by phone, if you could please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you, and we will give you a moment to do so. We will now hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. Again, I'd like to remind you, when it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. I'd like to remind the callers, they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we will begin with our first caller.
This is the white sheep of the family, Tru, because I'm different, but not bad. Over $5.8 million of the people's money is going to New Ranch Land Company. County government can grab another 190 acres from the people's use. Here's Sweetwater Regional Park. Funny thing is, if you supervisors keep scooping up land like Land Monopoly, Bill Gates, then eventually all land will be in the vicinity of a county-owned park. About that. County's multiple species conservation plans have already taken more than 56,000 acres of land, using 85 different species as excuses. These plans don't even protect endangered hawks or eagles from toxic lithium-based wind turbines. What they do, take land up for rats, toads, mountain lions who are ready to kill our pets and bite our faces off, and even land for butterflies that just end up flying away. Here's some extra information to put this land monopoly topic in even clearer perspective. I found this while researching the Elkhorn City Council's April 11 agenda. This is directly from the California Wildfire and Forest Resilience Action Plan, quote, "The state has invested $1.4 billion in California climate investment. Forest land ownership in California, state land, 3%, private land, 40%, federal land, 57%," end quote. You see, the federal government owns most of the land in California. They're way outside of their constitutionally limited area of DC. And that's why their multiple species conservation programs they demand of the state and the state then demands of the county need to be rejected. Their only acquiring land keep conserved away from our use and enjoyment like nature and tidings, while funding facilitators collect their debt dollar checks and pretend they're protecting the earth. It's clear that's not true, especially the more items we go through today. We're going to see it's all about land monopoly by government. Very sad.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Oliver Twist. While I support the premise of land acquisition for open space in general, and particularly in this instance, as well as for item seven next, I want to bring to your attention, under the umbrella of environmental justice, that your acquisitions have real consequences for neighboring properties. I ask you to be mindful of, and even consider creating a mitigation fund for, the impact that your public land purchases have on surrounding communities. While open space is a great community benefit, what happens when a property is deeded as open space is that you render it unable to be mitigated, thus tipping the scales for surrounding properties to be pushed from a fire severity zone rating of high into a severity zone rating of very high, making homeowner insurance astronomically expensive, if not outright unobtainable, for surrounding communities. Examples of recent impacted areas are the Santa Maria Valley west of Ramona and all the way across into Highland Valley, and also the north end of Twin Oaks Valley Road up into Deer Springs Road. Both shifted from high to very high zones in the recent fire zone changes. And since you're a data-driven agency, it would be interesting to take a survey from area homeowners and see what impact those new maps had on those homeowner insurance rates. Supervisor Lawson Reamer recently suggested a few meetings ago that the county proactively look into acquiring land that goes to auction from the county property tax default list. If that is truly an aspiration of this board, you absolutely must create a mitigation fund to make neighboring homeowners whole and supplement the increased insurance costs they will face. Out of respect for your time, I will just say ditto for item seven and not call back in. Have a great day. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Since land in neighboring Humos is going for about $10,000 an acre, I would consider this deal pretty expensive at $28,000 an acre. Not sure when the recent comparable land sales were done, but real estate prices are declining at this time. And I would not like to see the county pay over $5 million of our tax money if the land is only worth $2 million top. Not sure why this is still even being considered. And I'm not sure, by the way, how acquiring open space would reduce greenhouse gases by 240 tons a year. It seems to me that that would assume a future use of adding over 240 tons of greenhouse gases a year than this is open land. And I'm guessing nothing's on it. Could someone there explain this, please? And by the way, I thought that was kind of funny, you know, I think it's kind of funny the junk running down on us from the sky. I mean, and the suggestion to put it on a website. I mean, are you going to say, well, there's stuff coming out of the sky? Let's look at the website, see how bad for us it is? Anyway, thanks for your time, and I think we can do better.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
You know who I am. All this land acquisition is unconstitutional, and you guys know it, but you don't know what the constitution is or what it entails. Great. And as Paul was saying, it's quite interesting, you're claiming it's going to reduce greenhouse gases when it's already open space. And then, so I mean, are those animals that you're trying to save, do they not produce greenhouse gases? I don't know. That is so weird. But yeah, and the $5,350,000, $28,000 in acres, quite a lot to spend on something that's, you know, just open space like that, especially like Paul was saying, when the land prices are actually not like that. But when summer light comes in and says that the, you know, one of these land preserve for wildlife acquisitions, that was for the San Marcos landfill, has now taken a turn for the worse, how could you guarantee that all of these aren't going to do that? How do we trust that you guys are not going to spend our money to just let the land go to shit and create more greenhouse gases like you don't want? I mean, everything you do is a contradiction in itself. You guys understand that, right? I mean, it's ridiculous. So if you can't even keep up with the ones that you already have, what makes us think that you're even going to be able to do anything with the one you're acquiring or all the other ones you're acquiring? And are you doing it at top dollar to make sure that you get it and that no one else can buy it? And so you're wasting our money to ensure that you buy up all the land? It's a good way to make sure that people aren't homeless and stuff. You guys are doing a real good job because everything you're doing is exactly what you're supposed to, which is destroy the earth, make it so that people are slaves and they have no rights, and that you guys think that you're just going to, people are going to come to you and ask for help. I don't know why anybody does, because all the things you guys touch turn to gold. It's great. It is so great. I'm just going to sit here.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
My name is John Bottorff with CleanEarthForKids.org. We thank the county for taking action to protect sensitive species and habitat and biodiversity. Healthy environment protects our health and our future. We must protect our air, water, and land. You want to protect these precious resources, then take action to stop the use of synthetic pesticides and fertilizers. Pesticides are poison, that is their purpose, and they are designed and created to be toxic and lethal. Please take action to quickly transition all county buildings and properties, including leased lands, leased buildings and land, to a non-toxic integrated pest management program that does not allow synthetic pesticides or fertilizers to protect human health and environment. Also, stop the installation of synthetic turf on all city lands, properties, and Also, stop the installation of synthetic turf on all city lands, properties, and projects, and place a moratorium on all plastic grass installations throughout the county. Plastic grass is a massive source of microplastic pollution that is loaded with PFAS forever chemicals, along with phthalates and other toxic chemicals that harm our children and pollute our water. Calling it artificial or synthetic turf doesn't change the fact it is plastic and toxic. Synthetic pesticides, toxic chemicals, and synthetic turf are a direct threat to biodiversity, environment, and human health and our future. Please take action to stop, to truly protect these vital areas and stop these toxins. Also, back to my recent comment, unleaded aviation fuel is available right now, approved by the FAA with no modification needed for the aircraft. There is no need to wait till 2030. Please stop leaded aviation fuel now. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chairwoman Vargas, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you so much. I know we have a motion in a second. I just wanna acknowledge and thank the team, because this is really important. This 11-mile loop trail will continue around the entire Sweetwater Reservoir. And the other part about it is that it's been, we've been waiting for this for 20 years. So it's pretty exciting. So thank you for all the great work around this, and so I'm excited about what this will look like, and District One appreciates you. So we have a motion in a second, so please vote.
And Chairwoman Vargas, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors who are present and voting aye.
Thank you. We'll now proceed with discussion item number seven. Set hearing for June 14th. Mount Olympus County Preserve approved acquisition of approximately 425 acres of open space. We're gonna go ahead and open it up for public comment.
Thank you, Chairwoman Vargas. We have four total requests to speak, all of those coming via phone. I'd also like to note for the record, we did receive one e-comment on this item, and that was in favor. For any members of the public that requested to speak on this item by phone, if you could please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you, and we'll give you a moment to do so. We will now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, again, you'll be unmuted and you'll hear recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. Again, I'd like to remind the callers, they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we will begin with our first caller.
You know who I am, again. Here we are talking about the same thing that is unconstitutional. You know, you guys are supposed to buy a family, but you know, you don't play the game of the federal government, right? You don't get money. I'm not sure. Still not sure, just like if we don't play your game, we don't get money. It kinda just goes down the line, right? And why is this one only $5,000 an acre? Don't understand that.
Can you give us a second so we can fix the phone, because we can't hear you? Oh, it's your phone. We can't really hear you. Can you try it again?
Are you ready?
Yeah, well, we can't hear you. It's like, it's like cutting in and out.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Is this better?
Yes.
Is that better? Hello?
We can hear you. Please continue your comments.
Okay. So I was saying, like, again, this is unconstitutional, and the fact that, you know, you guys have to play the game of the federal government, because if you don't, then you don't get the money to do things. And even if you get the money, it doesn't mean that you're gonna spend it on it, but you have to pretend that you're playing the game, just like we do as citizens. If we don't play the game that you're playing, you would try and keep us out of it. So it goes down the line. And that's why you guys have to do this stuff, because you wanna get money from the federal government and from the state to do things and push all of this stuff upon the people. And all of it's unconstitutional, and all of it's BS. I mean, the fact that you wanna reduce all these greenhouse gases, and like I said before, you have these species that are emitting them, they are carbon-based. So they themselves, in your line of whatever, are emitting greenhouse gases. Everything you do is a contradiction to what you claim that you want. And you shouldn't be buying up this land. And I don't understand why this one costs only $5,000, and the other one is per acre $20,000.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
Shrod is the word. This is truth, a hero fighter no one chose. So, speaking of mountain lions to bite our faces off, here's yet another, county land monopolizing item. It pretends to care about the environment and sensitive species and habitats. For over $2.6 million, the county's going to buy 425 acres to expand their Mount Olympus County Preserve in Palo Palma, all because the state funneled $200,000 debt dollars via California Habitat Conservation Fund deer and mountain lion habitat grant to scoop up this land. Mountain lion habitats have become more important than us. I'm ready to argue that the human species is the real sensitive species and needs protecting from the state. They don't want us to have freedom of mobility, truly affordable and nice-sized homes, or land to live on and enjoy. I think it's about time that we require protection. I'm all for a Freedom Warriors Conservation Fund, but I'm absolutely against any land monopoly state or federal grant. And if what this item says about conservation benefiting water quality is true, then how come the county keeps trying to push toxic sewage wastewater as the new drinking water? How come they don't have fresh, unpurified, natural spring water being supplied from these conserved lands? You see, nothing ever adds up with the climate change cult. So add item seven and item six together, and these supervisors are spending over $8.4 million on 615 acres of land. And they claim that a special election is expensive. Please, telling the truth, now that's expensive. Try it sometime, if you dare, and watch the funds dwindle. But your dignity will soar, and the people that matter will actually respect you. So just say no, and grow an ethical backbone, or we'll all be living in one giant county park before you know it. Is that really what you want? I don't think so. So start telling the truth, be real that it's about money. And then maybe people will support it if you're honest.
Thank you. Your time is up. And Chairwoman Vargas, that concludes public comment on this item.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, sir. Do a second.
I'll second, and just a couple of comments on this one. I wanna say thank you very much to Brian and all the parks team for identifying this property, and with the, you know, congratulations on getting the $200,000 grant. I think this is a great effort in all this open space that aligns with ours and our tribal neighbors' conservation goals. Thank you very much.
Sorry. With no additional discussion, please vote.
And Chairwoman Vargas, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors who are present and voting aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item number eight, the authority to advertise an award or construction contract for the Tijuana River Valley Rehabilitation Project and related CEQA endem to an environmental impact report. The team is here to answer any questions if my colleagues have any questions, but first let me go ahead and go to public comment, and then we'll, everybody can ask questions.
Thank you, Chairwoman Vargas. We have four total requests to speak. Again, all four are coming via phone. For any members of the, oh, I'd also like to note for the record, we did not receive any e-commerce on this item. Any members of the public that have requested to speak on this item by phone, again, if you could please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you, and we will give you a moment to do so. We will now hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted and you'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. Again, I'd like to remind the callers, they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we will begin with our first caller.
Paul Henken. I'm glad that the board included four authorized parks and recreation department director to apply for an accept grant funds from the State Water Resources Control Board for projects that address water quality in its recommendations. However, I am worried that the planned demolitions before the receipt of these funds might cause old pipes to leak and burst, and other toxic materials might then lead into river wetlands compounding the inclusion problem. I hope this issue will be fully addressed before demolition begins and not on the fly. The EIR Environmental Impact Review detailed some mitigation measures for construction, page E22, which would be useful for the demolition of dilapidated structures. So I'm hopeful that this would prevent environmental damage due to demolition activity. I believe that the project can actually go ahead, although I feel that it would be safer to revise the EIR to address these concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
While others sleep, I stay awake. This is truth. We're just skipping presentations today. They don't even matter, do they? The vote's always a guaranteed unanimous yes. County's 1,800-acre Tijuana River Valley Regional Park around the Imperial Beach is continuing expansion and construction. I do wonder if butterflies are guaranteed at the butterfly garden, or if they've already flown away. They are in season, though, it's spring. This item says that in 2018, the Department of Parks and Rec received an over $1.3 million grant from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, just for a study of some land along the Tijuana River corridor. And now, there's demolition plans. Somehow, despite everything being blown to smithereens, the habitat will be restored. Not sure how that environmentally works out. And it all magically passed the CEQA, even the dilapidated structures will be demolished. One could imagine the toxins from an old building, such as sulfur lead, for example. Didn't we just hear about lead as the excuse to acquire $5.1 million in yesterday's item eight? I guess CEQA is like the FDA. Everything toxic is safe, especially if you throw an emergency label on it. And everything is being funny money funneled with more state debt dollars via State Water Resource Control Board grant, and a California Department of Fish and Wildlife watershed restoration grant. The total cost of a Tijuana River Valley rehabilitation project will be $2.4 million in state debt dollars. I don't know, Nora, I don't think I can support the demolition of old buildings passing CEQA with flying colors. It seems fraudulent. Nothing in particular against the park. Do you think, though, that we should build a border perimeter fence around the park, Nora? Nah, just kidding. But I'm gonna watch the video, see who's paying attention. Let's see. I don't know, maybe Sarah. Joel, he never pays attention. Sarah.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
You know who I am, and so, sure, this is gonna trigger you, Nora, but am I wrong, or is there not an emergency crisis going on in the Tijuana River Valley with the water? I don't know, but I mean, does that not heap into the land? I guess that would help 300 pounds of seeds, and 13,900 native container plants grow quite well. Actually, you should probably take that water and just put it over there. But I wonder with all of these land conservation things, and the fact that you wanna have all this habitat in there, how do you keep them in there? Will you guys build a fence, be like, you can't go past this perimeter? Or are you gonna do some kind of 5G manipulation just to make sure they don't? Just wondering, like, you wanna preserve it for them, but what's the guarantee that they're actually gonna stay there, and it's gonna be useful? And why does that cost so much to demolish buildings? I mean, I'm pretty sure some of us could do that, you know, quite cheap. But $2.4 million plus another $400 in related project expenses seems quite a lot to just plant some plants. I don't know, but I guess you guys gotta go to the, you know, most expensive type of places to acquire these things, so that the people just have to pay more, right? It's good, you guys just love to waste our money so well, especially for things that aren't even helping us. Just, you know, helping the federal government and state and, you know, the UN agenda kinda take place, so it's good. Although you guys pretend you care about stuff, but everything emits greenhouse gases that lives, so do you guys. And I'm pretty sure you're emitting a lot right now, and we need to do something about that. It's getting dangerous. The levels are extremely high. So I think we need to think about you guys and your impact and footprint, just in general.
Thank you. Your time is up. And Chairwoman Vargas, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you, thank you. And I know my colleagues, my colleagues, the team, who are my colleagues, are here to answer questions, but before we do that, I just wanna say, I'm happy to make a motion for this item. I think everyone knows that one of the first things that I did when I came as supervisor was declare the area a public healthcare crisis, and we have an opportunity here to do something that is going to have great impact, the rehabilitation project, so that just to make sure that everybody has all this information. It was, it used to be called the Brown Property Restoration Project, and it was one of 27 projects that was recommended to, that we needed to address. And so we did hold, we held as a county a lot of public meetings, and workshops, and conducted targeted public and stakeholder outreach with over 30 stakeholder groups in that area as a county. And the, this is something that will really have an impact in our region. We've, we've received grants from the Department of Fish and Wildlife for the rehabilitation project, and it really does demolish structures that have been, you know, that have been there for a long time, that really, that have been remaining in the property. But what's really great about this area is that it actually has, you know, it's part of the South County Multiple Species Conservation Program, and also a long-term regional habitat conservation program that was focused on balancing the plants and animal species, et cetera. And so this, I think the funding from the state will go far for our local residents in the Tijuana River Valley and nearby communities, and it's really a great way for, for us to really rehabilitate that whole area. And I think for me, it's one of the priorities that folks have an opportunity to see South Bay as, as part of the bigger component of the region, of the county as a whole, and people can come visit and have a lot of plans about what that's gonna look like. So I think this is the first step, and I hope my colleagues will support, support this motion. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah. Thanks. Well, I can't third it, but I would. It's really, no, honestly, sorry, sorry I got ahead of my skis. I am really excited. I think the chairwoman's done just a wonderful job on championing this. It's a great project. Really appreciate Brian Albright and your team for driving this forward and making it happen. I go hiking in the area quite a lot, and I can tell you from firsthand experience, this is a very, very needed endeavor and needed project, and I'm just so much, so very much looking forward to seeing the amazing habitat improvements. It's really a, has the potential to be just such an extraordinary environmental asset and a biodiverse asset for our whole region, and we haven't really had the focus on it in the past, and I'm just so happy to see that we've been moving this forward and really be excited to be able to enjoy this for many, many years to come. So thank you.
Motion in a second, please vote.
And Chairwoman Vargas, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors who are present voting aye.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item number nine, is the Notice Public Hearing Cost Recovery Proposal to Amend Portions of the Administrative Code and Ordinance Related to Land Development Fees in Deposit Effective Fiscal Year 2023-2024. We have a presentation on this, so we're gonna go ahead and turn it over to my team.
Good morning, Chairwoman Vargas and members of the board. I'm Amy Leighton, Group Finance Director for the Land Use and Environment Group.
I'm sorry, I can't see you. There you are.
I'm Amy Leighton, Group Finance Director for the Land Use and Environment Group, also referred to as LUG. With me today are the Departments of Environmental Health and Quality, Agriculture, Waits and Measures, and the Land Development Team, which includes Planning and Development Services, Parks and Recreation, and Public Works. On behalf of these departments presenting cost recovery proposals for fiscal year 23-24, I will provide an overview of information that applies to all of the fee packages being presented for your consideration. Fee increases are never easy, and we recognize that many customers are still recovering from impacts from the pandemic and rising costs due to inflation. We continue to evaluate our services to apply innovations and savings and have committed to returning to the board each year to minimize the impacts of increases to our customers. Approval of the fee adjustments will ensure departments are able to provide quality services to our community, maintain service levels, continue making data-driven policy decisions, and expand community needs assessments. This year, the proposed fee packages include portions of the labor increases from the current fiscal year that were not included in last year's fee package due to the timing of labor negotiations, plus negotiated salary changes and equity increases that will go into effect in the upcoming fiscal year. Although the increases may be higher than in years past, it is important to note that making our employees' salaries more competitive with what others are paying directly improves our vacancies, turnover, and retention, which in turn positively impacts our ability to deserve, to deliver services efficiently. Additionally, these fee packages include increases in support we pay to other departments within the county, such as costs for facility management, contracting, and information technology. These rates are also impacted by labor increases. Each of our departments completes a comprehensive cost and fee analysis, an approach that is consistent across the enterprise and followed by other groups with fees such as HHSA and PSG. Departments conduct time studies and calculate hourly rates. Then their rates are reviewed and approved by auditor and controller to ensure fees are developed in an accurate and transparent way. Key to our process in LUG is stakeholder engagement. Our departments conducted outreach through various formats in multiple languages to customers, professional associations, community sponsor and planning group chairs, and advisory boards. And you will hear from each department about the feedback they receive during their outreach. Our costs can fluctuate year to year, which is why the departments annually evaluate costs and the time it takes to provide services. This chart shows some of the costs impacting fees and to what degree they are within our control. Costs such as salary and benefits, retirement, and costs we pay to other departments such as for information technology, contracting support, facility management, and public liability are outside of our control. And you will hear from our departments that these are the majority of their costs. The blue area on the chart represents costs the departments with fee packages have control over and can be adjusted based on operational need, such as services and supplies, vehicles, and equipment. These are also the costs we can positively impact with innovations and streamlining at the LUG department level. Fee revenue is vital because it not only funds departments' efforts in meeting state mandates, supporting agriculture and equity and commerce, regulating businesses, and protecting public health and safety, but it also allows the departments to continue working towards achieving objectives that align with the board's strategic plan, which would otherwise be difficult to accomplish without this funding source. Approval of the fee adjustments will ensure our departments are able to continue to deliver services in the manner our ratepayers expect, in addition to making data-driven policy decisions, meeting sustainability goals, and expanding community needs assessments. And the fiscal year 2324 recommended operational plan is based on these proposed fee adjustments. If there is no fee increase, LUG departments would need to request alternative county funding in the amount of $5.7 million. If there is no fee increase and no alternative funding, departments would not be able to fill vacancies, which will cause operational impacts, including increased processing times, reduced education opportunities to assist with compliance, shifting certain activities from inspection-based to complaint-only response, and reducing services to core regulatory functions. Resources would be shifted away from innovation and data analysis to frontline operations, all of which could potentially lead to regulatory compliance issues with our businesses and increased risk to public health and safety. If a fee adjustment is not approved, the change in future fee updates will be even greater based on the need to cover the increases in this proposal plus future year budget adjustments. I will now turn it over to Vince Nicoletti to provide details on the land development cost recovery proposal.
Good morning, Chairwoman Vargas and members of the board. My name is Vince Nicoletti, Deputy Director with Planning and Development Services. I'm joined by Rich Whipple, Deputy Director with the Department of Public Works, and Brian Albright, Director for the Department of Parks and Recreation. This item is a request to approve proposed adjustments related to land development fees, deposits, and hourly rates for all three departments. The land development team works together to review projects ranging from the replacement of a home water heater to renewable energy projects or housing. Services include environmental and community character review for discretionary permits through the inspection of homes and public infrastructure, such as the roads, parks, and pathways that make up our communities. The land development team is committed to sustainability and environmental justice as we conduct inspections, review plans and projects, and ensure compliance with health and safety codes. This chart shows some of the cost drivers for both nondiscretionary, meaning there are set costs that are beyond the control of the department, and discretionary, meaning the department has discretion on spending. This is just an example of one department, Planning and Development Services, but it shows that eighty percent of the costs, the majority of which is salary and benefits, but also includes fees to other county departments, facilities, utilities, information technology, and public liability costs, which are outside of our control. Our departments do not set or approve these costs. They are approved external to our departments through actions such as negotiated labor agreements, yet we are still responsible to cover them in our budgets. Similarly, the Department of Public Works has eighty-seven percent of their costs as nondiscretionary. Other categories are more discretionary, such as the services and supplies, vehicles, among others. Departments implement a variety of cost containment measures to reduce and control costs, but the vast majority of the cost increases we do not have control over. While costs have written, PDS, DPW, and DPR have worked to contain them and will continue to do so. The following innovations not only reduce county operating costs, keeping fees lower than they otherwise would be, but also save customers time and money. Today, over sixty-four percent of our building permit volume is issued online. Departments have expanded our online and digital services that allow the land development team to provide more convenient and efficient ways of conducting business with customers. Some of these efforts include online permits and payments, self-service reports, digital stamps and approvals in lieu of requiring hard copy stamps and plans, text message building inspection management, and automated stormwater inspection scheduling. In addition, PDS and DPW use mobile field inspection applications. And while we continue to add virtual service offerings, our in-office services remain available for customers that prefer in-person interactions. These savings, these cost-saving measures save us over two million annually for the three departments. Without these cost containment measures, plan check and building permit fees would be an average of seven point three percent higher, and hourly rates for the departments would be an additional two point eight to three point six percent higher. In addition to cost savings, PDS and DPW had developed initiatives such as the subcontractor disclosure ordinance and web interface to improve transparency and safety for construction and right-of-way projects. Our cost recovery proposal for your consideration today has an average increase this year of ten percent. This increase is larger than we've typically seen in prior years. Due to the timing of the negotiated labor agreements last year, our last fee adjustment didn't capture the full cost increases in those labor agreements that went into effect last summer. Today's proposal captures a portion of the salary and benefit increases that were not included in the last adjustment, plus the increases that will go into effect in the next fiscal year. Over the last eleven years, the average annual increase has been three point seven percent per year. This table contains a high-level view of the changes for all three departments since the last fee package. PDS is highlighted in green, DPW in blue, and DPR in gray. For PDS, the average fee would increase $157 or nine point five percent. The average intake deposit would increase $664 or 10.3 percent, and the average hourly rate would increase $24 or 11 percent. For DPW, the average fee would increase $10 or 4 percent. The average intake deposit would increase $333 or 14 percent, and the average hourly rate would increase $28 or 14.4 percent. DPR's average hourly rate would increase $10 or 8 percent. You may note that DPW's fee increase is lower than the other average increases. The reason this is lower is because they only have five total fees that are based on work being done by classifications that had lower salary and benefit increases this year. In comparison to other jurisdictions, this chart shows the plan check and permit fees as calculated for a 2,700-square-foot single-family dwelling. It's the same size the BIA uses for their prototype home in their annual fee survey of jurisdictions. The yellow bar represents our current fee, and the blue bar represents the proposed fee for the county of San Diego. Our current fee is $5,206, and if approved, it would increase by seven dollars, by seven percent to $5,595. We would be the sixth lowest in the region and be roughly $750 below the median cost. Some stakeholders expected larger increases this year, yet understood the need for adjustments to make salaries more competitive. There was consistent appreciation for cost containment and innovation efforts, as well as the annual review of fees to avoid larger increases if changes are delayed by multiple years. Stakeholders also noted support for fee adjustments that will help redo, reduce project review times, though there were some comments that noted higher fees do add to project costs. If there is no fee increase, the land development team needs to request $3.5 million in one-time alternative county funding, which would be a one-year fix only. If there is no fee increase and no alternative funding identified, we'd have longer processing times created in unfunded backlog and sun programs and reduce our overall service to customers. We'd also likely shift staff from cost-saving innovations to focus on frontline work, which would have a negative impact on fees because we would have less ability for cost containment measures that we shared earlier. If a fee adjustment is not approved, the change in future year updates would be even greater based on the need to cover cost increases in this proposal plus future budget adjustments. Staff's recommendation, as reflected in the board letter, are on May 3rd to find the proposed actions exempt from CEQA under section 15273, waive board policy B29 to continue existing fee waiver programs, approve retitle and waive further reading of ordinances, and if approved, set the second reading for May 24th. Adoption of the ordinances would take place upon second reading on May 24th, and the proposed fees would be effective July 1st, 2023. This completes the presentation for item nine, and staff is available for questions. Thank you.
Do we have a motion on this item?
Let me turn my mic on.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to make that motion, but I did want to thank staff and the leadership. There's $2 million of savings by streamlining. And as we struggle with trying to turn permits around, coming out of COVID, I know that in my district, we've had some backlogs, and I really appreciate it by thinking of inventive ways to get through those backlogs and make sure that we get people building again and putting people back to work. So I just want to thank everybody for their great effort. I appreciate you.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second? Do any, any comments? No, okay. Just trying to figure out if you want to have comments. You're good? Okay. All right, but we gotta have public comment first.
Thank you, Chairwoman Vargas. We have four total requests to speak, all coming via phone. I'd like to note for the record, we didn't receive any ecomments. For any of the members that requested to speak on this item by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. Again, I'd like to remind the callers that they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we will begin with our first caller.
It's true. Just like yesterday's waste of time item discussions on who knows how many increased fees on everyone in the county, maybe I actually got that number. This item is yet another increase fee to equitably increase the chances of homelessness for everyone. This item will create a land development cost recovery proposal for discretionary land development and building permit applications processed by the Department of Parks and Rec. Services with fees on, on, excuse me, fees on everyone include environmental and project review, health and safety inspections of homes, and inspections of public infrastructure, such as roads, parks, and trails. Excuses to start increasing these fees are labor negotiations, as usual, and something called equity adjustments. That sounds a lot like racism and favoritism. This item says that planning and development services costs are determined by the department based on operational need. Does anybody really believe that PDS is going to suddenly request less money one day? Doubt it. That's not how government works, and that's why there should always be a set budget that doesn't fluctuate without proof of legitimate need. This item also says that PDS needs this cost recovery to ensure data-driven deception decisions. That's not good. That makes me want to say no to any increases in cost recovery for them. A total of 143 fees and 108 deposits are being increased. And PDS, of course, wants to up their average hourly rate change by 11.1 percent. DPR can't resist either. They want to up their average hourly rate change by eight percent. An example of the new discriminatory fees is the fee on a single-family dwelling or duplex will be $9,276. So we can see why we have a very serious housing crisis because these types of fees are causing this. So where are the savings for the customers? I don't hear them, and I never have. I hear nothing but more fees, and I don't approve. I'd much rather have more single-family homes. And you-
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next caller.
Chair Vargas and honorable supervisors, my name is Sean Kilkeny, and I'm calling in support of item number nine. These updates are important to ensure projects move forward. I support efforts to keep projects moving through the development review process as expeditiously as possible. We understand Planning and Development Services is understaffed. Efforts to hire additional staff are ongoing, and we recognize it takes time to properly train new staff and bring them up to speed with a vast array of projects that county planners experience. As a result of the staffing shortages that PDS has experienced, review times have been extended, which lengthen project schedules and add costs to a project, period costs, holding costs, and financing costs. In the midst of a housing shortage and increasing interest rates, these costs reduce the viability of residential projects. Our request is that as staff is brought on, county focuses on providing firm schedules and emphasizes that meeting such schedules is a department priority. One recommendation would be to work with the development industry to agree on a phased-in schedule for project processing that takes review cycles down to thirty days. Another would be to provide a deemed complete letter for projects that submit complete sets of required planning materials, even when comments on the contents of those materials remain unresolved. We know that staff is doing great work and their best to hit schedules, but just don't have the resources to do so. With the update to the cost recovery and the addition of new staff, we hope PDS can achieve quicker processing timelines. Thank you again.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
You know who I am. Again, you guys, this does not, it does not create more housing. I don't understand why you can sit there and say that, and people believe it. It's insane because you guys have to meet the state mandates, right? Although you know we are a chartered county, and you don't have to do all those things. You just do it because you want to get the money, and you want to push this whole environmental justice and make sure there's compliance. All of those words are very telling. Comply. You guys have to comply. How many times have we heard that over the past several years, that if we're not compliant, you're going to be pushed out of society? And you guys set up all of these roadblocks, all of these things you guys put up, so that then we have to go through them? And you're basically saying that if you don't get more money from us, you're not going to be able to do your job? We don't need you to do that job because this agenda that you're pushing isn't something that the people want. It's totally bogus, yet you continue to up the fees and make it so that people can't even complete projects and change it all throughout. Like, it's always changing. It's never staying the same. So therefore, all these projects that take several years never end up getting completed. And it's all because you guys want to comply, and you have people that are 11 percent, some of the 28, some people don't even get $28 an hour, and you're upping their labor costs by that much. All of these people live on the streets and do all these things. It's ridiculous because this does not, just like everything else, help people build houses. It keeps them from doing it, but that is your plan. That's why I say you guys are so good at what you do, because you make sure that people can't do things. That's why you increase the fees. That's why you incentivize people to build the way you want them to and de-incentivize the people that don't comply. It's not equitable.
Thank you. Your time is up. And Chairwoman Vargas, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
And Chairwoman Vargas, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors who are present voting aye.
Thank you, and thank you to the team for their presentation. The next item on the agenda is item number 10, and this is specifically to the cost recovery proposal to adopt ordinance related to fees and deposit in the Department of Environmental Health and Quality Effective Fiscal Year 2023-24 and CEQA exception. There's a presentation on this item, so I'm going to turn it over to the team.
Good morning, Chairwoman Vargas and members of the board. I'm Stephen Tomayo, Deputy Director with the Department-
I'm Stephen Temayo, Deputy Director with the Department of Environmental Health and Quality, or DEHQ. DEHQ implements more than 40 programs and is committed to environmental justice as we conduct inspections, compliance monitoring, and enforce environmental laws and regulations. Each program we implement helps improve public health and/or environmental quality in our Our department's cost composition is shown in this chart, displaying both the non-discretionary and discretionary cost drivers for DEHQ. The majority of costs, or 75%, are outside of our control and approved external to our department, such as salary and benefits and retirement, but also includes fees paid to other county departments, facility management and utilities, information technology costs, and public liability costs. The remaining 25% of our costs are discretionary, such as services and supplies, among others. We implement a variety of cost containment measures to reduce and control costs, but the vast majority of cost increases we do not have control over at the department level, yet we are still responsible to cover them in our budget. Every year, DEHQ continues to do all we can to contain costs and apply savings that occur as a result of our innovations and efficiencies. Collectively, these efficiencies, listed in the blue left-hand column, have helped save more than 1,200 hours of staff time, equivalent to $197,000 this year. The green right-hand column depicts the total department cost containment included in this proposal, which equals $836,000. These efforts helped reduce costs by 2%. Since 2004, DEHQ has maintained a commitment of fund balance, or reserves, that was generated by program operational cost savings and has restrictions on how it can be used. To heal ourselves and provide another year of continued relief for businesses still impacted from the pandemic and current economic conditions, DEHQ is proposing to utilize $1.7 million in department internal funding to offset costs for hazardous materials, food, body art, pool, and septic programs. If the reserves were not utilized, fees would have increased an additional 7.5% on average. While we are proud of our accomplishments this past year, there are also areas of improvement that we are focused on in the upcoming year. Last year, DEHQ faced challenges in our land use program with staff vacancy and increased permit volumes. We are focused on rebuilding this program to return to planned review times of 30 days by this winter, respond to customer inquiries within three business days, improve processes, cross-train staff, and improve data collection. We will also engage our customers in a focus group to hear their ideas and feedback for improvement. The reserve funds DEHQ is proposing to use in these programs will bring the septic and discretionary grading fee increases down to an average of 7%, which otherwise would have increased by 13%. Without all our cost containment efforts and use of one-time department funds, the overall average fee increase would have been approximately 19%. DEHQ's efforts to contain costs through innovations, efficiencies, and one-time reserve funds are mitigating cost increases by 9.5%. DEHQ's cost recovery proposal for your consideration is an average fee increase of Shown here is a summary of average fee increases by DEHQ Division. The table shows the number of permits for these categories and the average dollar and percentage increases when compared to the current fees. We conduct benchmarking as part of our annual fee review process and do our best to try to find and make comparisons most similar to our programs. We talk with jurisdictions to understand what comprises their fees, service levels provided, and if they use any other alternative funding, and review when they last made fee adjustments. The benchmarking charts for DEHQ show the current and proposed fees, as well as the median fee amount of the jurisdictions we benchmark with and the year that jurisdiction last adjusted their fees. Food facilities with 1 to 10 employees is the largest category of permits by volume in our food program, with over 5,000 small restaurant permits throughout the region. Our current fee is $791 marked in yellow, and the proposed fee is $809 marked in blue. Compared to last year, the increase is $18, or 2%. This slide shows benchmark data for the hazardous materials base fee plus one inventory item, which are common permit fees for small business. Our proposed combined one-item fee cost of $484, represented by the blue column, remains below the benchmark median of $549. The most common fee by volume in the land and water quality division is the plant submittal review of onsite wastewater treatment systems, or septic systems, with an average of 630 permits annually. Our current fee is $1,266 in yellow, and the proposed fee is $1,355 in blue, which is below median. DEHQ held community engagement through stakeholder and outreach sessions, direct emails, social media, and the DEHQ website. While the need to increase fees is a tough conversation to have, especially with businesses who are still recovering from the pandemic and economic impacts, the majority of our customers understood the need for our cost recovery proposal. Feedback included requests for continuous innovation to contain costs, annual review and incremental fee increases, and decreased plan review turnaround times in our septic program. The Environmental Health and Quality Advisory Board sent a letter of support. The San Diego County Disposal Association expressed their neutral position, and we received two comments related to concerns with any fee increase in general. If there is no fee increase, DEHQ needs to request alternative county funding in the amount of $2.1 million in order to continue to deliver our existing programs and services. If the fee package is not approved and alternative funding is not identified, DEHQ will need to maintain an additional 17 vacancies to offset the $2.1 million gap and to maintain our core functions of meeting program mandates. Anticipated operational impacts include increased processing times and a reduced ability for outreach innovation and streamlining. If a fee adjustment is not approved, the change in future fee updates will be compounded based on the need to cover the increases in this proposal plus future year budget adjustments. DEHQ fee ordinances require two hearings. Today's recommendations include finding that the proposed actions is exempt from CEQA, the adjustments in fees and charges are necessary to meet operating expenses in fiscal year 23-24, a waiver of Board Policy B29, approve the first reading, read title, and waive further reading of the ordinance, and if approved, set a hearing for May 24, 2023. Adoption of the ordinance would take place after the second reading on May 24, and the proposed fees would be effective on July 1, 2023. This concludes our department's presentation, and we're available for questions.
All right, we're going to go ahead and open up our public comment, and then we'll come back to my colleagues.
Thank you, Chairwoman Vargas. We have four total requests to speak, all coming via phone. I'd also like to note for the record, we did not receive any ecomments on this item. For any members of the public that requested to speak on this item by phone, if you could please dial into the conference line now using those instructions that were provided to you. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted. You'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. I'd like to remind the callers, they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we'll begin with our first caller.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Anne Riddle here. I called in today to support item 10. I realize increasing fees is always difficult to small businesses, but I also realize that the operating cost of the county probably includes paying employees, and the county is really committed to making sure their employees have a competitive wage, and you're doing a very delicate balancing here, and I appreciated the presentation noted that. I wanted to address the issue of environmental health in general because a lot of good public policy is really meant to improve the environment. I've often spoken to the value it would be to all of us associated with the environment to look at the dangers and the poor health associated with secondhand smoke, be it tobacco or marijuana, and look at those environments where it could be decreased, whether it's an employment environment, or in this case, I'm talking about a public environment, and suggest that the county at some later time take a good look at removing secondhand smoke, marijuana, and tobacco from the public venue, and so that all of us can have improved health because of that. Many of the cities across the county are moving towards that, or already have, or five already have, and let's see what we can do overall to improve environmental health here in our county. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the next caller.
So what do we have here in this item? Yet more increased fees for everyone, of course. This item will create a Department of Environmental Health and Quality Cost Recovery Proposal for services associated with food, pools, housing, body art, massage, camp programs, well, septic systems, site assessment and mitigation programs, the Certified Unified Program Agency, medical waste program, the Solid Waste Local Enforcement Agency, radiological health program, the vector laboratory, and more. The Department of Environmental Health and Quality is even spraying toxic larvicides all over the county on May 17th and 18th, June 7th and 8th, and 8th, June 28th and 29th, July 19th and 20th, August 9th and 10th, August 30th and 31st, and September 20th and 21st. Isn't that so nice of them? Anyone can read the safety data sheet on DEHQ's use of Forestar, which has a carcinogenicity level two that is harmful if inhaled and may cause damage to organs. It info's right on the county's aerial larvicide application website. Overall, DEHQ wants to increase a total of 214 fees. The results in costs and revenues of over $2.1 million for county government. Some examples of the new oppressive fees. A permit for a restaurant with less than 10 employees will cost $809. Even a temporary food vendor at a swap meet will pay $142 for a permit. If you want to do some temporary body art at a booth, the county will charge you $88. How many henna tacks is that? The only thing I agree with in this item is that the county is balancing environmental and economic interests at the expense of everyone who lives here in the community. So people need to stop wasting their time paying for permission. That's what I'm getting-
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
You know who I am. Oh, you guys are so annoying. You want to protect the environment, the community, public health with over 40 programs that prevent disease and promote environmental responsibility and enforce environment and public health laws. Interesting. So you guys were closing down restaurants for a boogeyman, giving out vaccines that are totally deadly, making people wear masks. They're geoengineering above the skies, and then everything that you guys put on the land is toxic, like fertilizer or the fire retardant. And so, you know, even just those aircraft that fly above us, drop lead, right? Are they doing anything about that? Probably not, right? But they're just making it so that they get their cost recovery for putting up all these fees for the people to keep them from being able to thrive. And, you know, it's funny that you guys want cost recovery for all the things that you enforce upon the people, yet all the people that had to close their business, lost their job, moved out of state because of all the things that you've done, they don't get cost recovery. But somehow, you guys seem to think that you're deserving of it, all of the people suffer, and you put up more regulations, more fees, claiming that it's going to help, right? Because you got to, you know, and I thought, why give them the money? Let's not do that because then it would reduce your function. I think that is the perfect plan. Let's reduce your function and give the people their freedom back to do what they want without you guys meddling in every single thing you can. Surprised you let people go to the bathroom without a camera in there to make sure that their stool is good enough for you guys to go down the sewer. Who knows? It's ridiculous.
Thank you. And Chairwoman Vargas, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve, colleagues? Second? I'll just do a second myself. Any other discussion? Please vote.
And Chairwoman Vargas, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors who are present voting high.
Thank you. All right, well, now proceed to item number 11, and this is set hearing for May 24, 2023, Cost Recovery Proposal to Adopt Ordinances Related to Fees in the Department of Agricultural Weights and Measures for Effective Fiscal Year 23-24 and CEQA Exceptions. I'm going to turn it over to the team for our presentation.
Good morning, Chairwoman Vargas and members of the board. I'm Megan Moore, Assistant Director of the Department of Agriculture Weights and Measures, or AWM. This is a request for Board's approval of AWM's Cost Recovery Proposal for 23-24. Our cost recovery proposal is related to the programs listed on this slide and supports public health and safety, a resilient food supply, continuing agricultural trade, enhanced consumer confidence, and a sustainable environment throughout the region. This chart shows some of the cost drivers of both non-discretionary, meaning they are set costs that are beyond the control of the department, and discretionary, meaning the department has discretion on spending. It shows that 85% of costs, the majority of which are salaries and benefits, but also include fees to other county departments, facilities and utilities, information technology costs, and public liability costs, which are costs outside of our control. Our department does not set or approve these costs. They are approved external to our department through actions such as the negotiated labor agreements, yet we are still responsible to cover them in our budgets. The remaining 15% of costs are more discretionary, such as services and supplies, vehicles, among others. Departments implement a variety of cost containment measures to reduce and control costs, but the vast majority of cost increases we do not have control over at the department While costs increase, we continue to gain savings through leveraging technology and streamlining processes with expanded digital services, improved routing and scheduling process for better industry engagement. Collectively, these innovations have saved more than 300 hours of staff time, a savings of about $51,000 which are passed on to our customers. Without these innovations, fees would have increased an additional 3.4% on average. AWM's cost recovery proposal before applying cost savings was a 9% on average fee increase. Through innovation and the resulting cost savings of 3.4%, AWM's cost recovery proposal for your consideration is a 5.6% on average fee increase. In fiscal year 21-22, the actual cost for all agricultural programs was $19.7 million. Of this amount, county, state, and federal funding provided $18.5 million, and the agricultural customers provided the remaining $1.2 million in fees. Of the $1.2 million, San Diego's local customers paid about $773,000, with the remaining $427,000 paid by out-of-county businesses that export commodities internationally using brokers near the border. AWM's last fee proposal increases were in fiscal years 22-23. This slide provides a summary of AWM fees commonly charged to our local customers. Our agricultural export program inspects and certifies about 10,500 plant shipments yearly, a service that is vital for our agricultural sector to access markets in other counties, states, and countries. The program's state export certificate fee shown in green is proposed, increased by $3. Shown in gray is our Certified Farmers Market Program, with a proposed fee increase for producer certificates of $3. This program supports economic opportunities for small farmers, promotes community engagement and belonging, while increasing healthy food available to the community. Next in yellow is our Hazardous Materials Inventory Program, a full cost recovery program that protects our natural and agricultural resources, first responders, and the larger community. The proposed base registration fee increase is $35, and the inventory item fee is proposed to decrease by $10. This fee reduction is due to the program's cost containment efforts. Our price verification program, shown in blue, is also full cost recovery program. The program supports consumer confidence of fair marketplace and working families by verifying that customers are being charged the correct price at the retail business that uses price scanners. The proposed price verification Tier 1 registration fee increase is $5. AWM also has program hourly rate- AWM also has program hourly rates charged for inspection services. The proposed increase on average is $12. We conduct benchmarking as part of our annual fee review process and do our best to try to find and make comparisons most similar to our programs. We talked with other counties to understand what comprises their fees, service levels provided, if they use other alternative funding, and review when they last made fee adjustments. We found that fees charged to customers by other counties do not represent the full cost of providing the services. For agricultural export program benchmarking, we looked at state export certificates. The graph reflects the fee charged for researching export requirements, conducting an inspection, and issuing a certificate at the customer's business location. Our current fee is yellow, and the proposed is blue. For price verification benchmarking comparison, we selected counties with a similar number of regulated retail businesses and geographical size. This slide shows Tier One, which are businesses with one to three price scanners and includes about 66% of the total businesses in the program. These customers are typically smaller businesses. Our current fee is yellow, and the proposed is blue. This is what we heard from our customers. Agricultural customers acknowledged proposed fee increases are reasonable and appreciated AWM's operational efficiencies. However, they stated that even small fee increases will have an impact on struggling operators and expressed concerns about supply chain and inflationary issues. For price verification and weights and measures device customers, no concerns were raised. If there are no fee increases, AWM would need about $91,000 in one-time alternative county funding for fiscal year 2324. There is no fee increase and no alternative county funding is provided, AWM would experience operational impacts including reduced ability to conduct community outreach and research for data-driven decision-making in support of regulatory compliance. AWM Fee Ordinance requires two hearings. Today's recommendations include: Sequo Exemption, sets a hearing for May 24th, waves Board Policy B29, and approves the introduction of the ordinance. The second hearing will be the adoption of the ordinance after the second reading on May 24th. The proposed fees would become effective July 1st, 2023. This concludes our presentation, and staff are available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Over to public comment.
Thank you, Chairwoman Vargas. We have three total requests to speak on this item, all coming via phone. I would also like to note for the record, we did receive one e-comment on this item, and it was in favor. For any members of the public that requested to speak on this item by phone, if you could please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you, and we'll give you a moment to do so. We will now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. You will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. Again, I'd like to remind the callers, they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we'll go ahead and begin with our first caller.
This is truth, and I wish I could have spoken in person today because you supervisors need some serious shaking up soon enough. This third in a row oppressive fee item will create a cost recovery proposal for the Department of Agriculture, Weights, and Measures, which includes fees and hourly rates for services related to agricultural export, certified farmers' markets, industrial hemp cultivation, verification of agriculture, hazardous materials inventory, and more. Overall, AWM wants to increase the total of 25 fees that will rake in over $90,000. Local agricultural growers will pay well over $772,000 in future fees. Here are some other fee examples. If you miss your agricultural export appointment, the county will charge you $78. The Certified Farmers Market Inspection's hourly rate will be $182 an hour, and an industrial hemp cultivation license fee will be over $214. With all these fees, it's no wonder produce prices at some of the farmers' markets tend to be high. Wave them and eliminate them is what I say. And definitely, the same should apply to agricultural export fees so the county farming industry can thrive instead of being oppressed. In fact, let's wave and eliminate all fees everywhere. But since the state and federal governments contributed $13.2 million in debt dollars to this AWM program, I guess that means they actually own it all. That means more lack of proper local representation for all of us in the county. Corruption, business as usual. And this is my second day talking about fees for over 10 minutes. Are you supervisors tired of hearing about raising fees and raising? I'll never put it yet because I am. I'm tired of hearing you guys raise fees. I recommend everyone watch the documentary entitled Death and Taxes: The Story of Gordon Cole. It'll put a lot into perspective.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next caller.
You know who I am. So, another propaganda update that was so exciting, just to hear all the BS. And part of that was funny because you're saying that 94% of that is coming from the government. You know where the government's money comes from, right? The people, right? So, the people are paying for that, and then you want the people to pay more fees to cover your asses for all the things that you guys are putting in place. And I find it funny that they want to, you know, it's like a good way to keep people out of farmers' markets, right? Because we don't want the people, you know, giving people good food and stuff like that. I mean, it's quite interesting, the government is paying people to destroy their crops in other areas, and you want to talk about the environment and things like that. Well, what about all the pesticides that are being sprayed? What about the toxic chemicals from above? What about the fire retardant? What about Roundup? You know, that's Agent Orange, right? But yet, we don't worry about those things, or fluoride in the water that then can go into the ground, right? And those are toxic or deadly. You don't, you know, mitigate any of that. So, what are these people really doing? Keeping the people from being able to provide actually good products, good things to the people? You got to come in and you got to regulate it and pretend that the government is paying for most of it? No, the people are. And it's ridiculous for you to try and pretend that the government's money comes from the government. At what point are you going to do something for the people that's actually going to help instead of raise fees and regulations? Do you care about the people? No, you don't, because Nora, you're just looking down at your phone. Joel, what's on your phone? You looking at porn? Hmm, Jim? You thinking about pilot, pilot program? Sarah's probably the only one paying attention.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next caller. Caller, please begin your comments.
Excuse me? Yes. Good afternoon. This is Kathleen Lippett. I'm sorry, I'm trying to get away from the... Sorry. Okay. My name is Kathleen Lippett, and thank you again for letting me speak. Again, the customers being referred to here do not include the stakeholders in the public or in communities. It is the public who is tasked with filing complaints instead of the department who is responsible for permitting in the first place. And although synthetic alternatives to hemp, from which THC-0, THC-Delta-9 are banned, there is no one checking to see whether the products that are being grown are actually for hemp production, natural hemp production, or for these products. They would be indistinguishable. And last, I want to again, no evidence has been provided that validates your county's privilege of granting sequo exemptions. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. And Chairwoman Vargas, that concludes public comment on this item.
Is there a motion to approve, colleagues? Is there a second? Do you have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
On the camera, tamping to see the Farm Bureau was part of the process and actually approved the increased fees. But I know there's some offsetting factors in place as well to bring the cost down. So, I'm glad they were offsetting. Thank you.
All right. Please vote.
And Chairwoman Vargas, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors to our present voting act.
Okay, so on item number 12, thank you, team, for all those presentations. I know some of you were, today was your first presentation, you were awesome. You rocked it, so thank you. Item number 11, I mean, number 12 is the Notice Public Hearing around the 2023 Housing Zoning Ordinance Update. This item has been pulled, but I want to make sure we're fair to the folks who came to speak on this item. So, I'm going to turn it over to the clerk so we can have public comment. The board will not be discussing this item. There won't be presentation, just we'll record public comment and have it ready for whenever we bring back this issue. All right?
Thank you, Chairwoman Vargas. We have seven total requests to speak on this item, all coming via phone. Again, I'd like to note for the record, we did not receive any ecomments on this item. For any members of the public that requested to speak on this item by phone, if you could please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We will now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. Again, when it's your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. You will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. Again, I'd like to remind the callers, they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking. We will begin with our first caller.
Paul Hincon. Health and Safety Code Section 50801, Section 622, the proposal defines emergency shelter as having minimal supportive services without further clarification. We should have services onsite or next door, such as employment or mental health services. Government Code 65660 defines low-barrier navigational center as a service-enriched shelter. So, this is another reason why it's only fair to offer nearby services to all in shelters. Let's fix the problem, not kick it down the road. I think shelters in Section 18D should be subject to discretionary review in order to minimize possible neighborhood conflict, like harassment or vandalism. ADUs, a way to keep new homes connected to city life and family. Good if you have space, but if you don't, doors open to slums and ghettos. Whether it's not, whether or not it's state law, plagues spread faster among crowded homes, such as homes set back only four feet from each other. Also, the 18 or 25-foot height is problematic, but cuts off light and power, proper ventilation. T-619, bring back the open sewers in its medieval times, and what happens next door will have a greater impact on both houses. The main issue being large amount of rain or water in the...
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next caller.
Good afternoon. My name is Shelby Thomas, and I'm the Director of Advocacy and Leadership at the San Diego Housing Federation. Today, I'm representing the Federation to express our overall support for the Housing Zoning Ordinance Update. We believe the proposed ordinance presents a unique opportunity for the county to lead the region in implementing innovative housing policies and strategies that go beyond what is required by the state. By doing so, the county can showcase its commitment to addressing housing affordability and accessibility. Of particular importance, we want to recognize Table 3, which outlines changes for homeless housing. These changes are a vital step in the right direction towards addressing homelessness. They offer necessary solutions that have a proven track record of success and effectiveness when implemented. Overall, we are in support of the proposed ordinance and look forward to seeing further efforts of regional collaboration in which housing is created quickly, easily, and affordably, thus tackling many prevalent housing challenges. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll go to the next caller.
You know who I am. Wow, again, so you think that, you know, adding more regulations and stuff helps people build homes? I don't understand that. It's like totally contradictory. And so, you're working and you have staff working on projects that allow the county to go beyond state law, facilitate housing production by making more housing projects, I write, removing steps from permitting, which is bogus, and reducing time, costs, and risks to develop housing in certain locations. Risk to develop housing in certain locations. Interesting. And this is all you're saying, that this will help the unincorporated area by implementing laws to facilitate housing? And that's funny, because one of them, you want to expand the area where the density housing applies for 100% of portable housing to apply from within one-half mile from major transit stops. Who in the unincorporated area, I mean, you think that's really going to, they're all within one-half mile? It's good. It's good. And you guys want to help homelessness? Well, then maybe you should make HUDs so that it doesn't take eight to 10 years, or like the woman that came in yesterday and said she'd been waiting for 13 years. Gosh, you guys are good at really helping. I'm pretty sure, yeah, that these laws are going to expedite the process for you guys, and you're going to create more housing in 20 to 30 to 100 years. It's good. And I do like that you brought in the 3D printed homes like Mark has been talking about for quite some time. But I'm kind of curious as to why all of a sudden now you look all those toward like an ADU to be in the front yard. Okay, just like wherever you can create density, right? It's density, 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 density. As long as we have density and you take up all the land around the people, they have to build in dense areas, right? Gosh, you guys are good.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next caller.
Truth, hopefully this horrible item never comes back. A new 2023 Housing Zoning Ordinance Update to Implement 21 New State Garbage Laws Such As Low-Barrier Navigation Center Shelters and Mixed-Use Zones. It's yet another housing-first, solutions-last shelter program that wants to shove unprepared people into housing. Who cares if they're addicted to drugs? Just stuff them in a sack and pack so Mayor Todd doesn't have to sweep them for Padres games. And supportive housing, where development with less than 12 units must restrict all units to homeless people only. And religious institution-affiliated housing project, which allows a religious institution to develop stack and packs at a place of worship, with a religious use parking reduced by 50%. And six different density bonuses, including allowing a housing project to receive unlimited density if the project is in an urbanized, very low-vehicle travel area, making sure that low-rate units are mixed in with units suckers paid full market rate for, and a new density bonus formula to really twist the numbers. And ADUs, no longer having limits on size. ADUs right at the front of a house, allowing the sale of an ADU separate from the house, increasing ADU height up to 25 feet. Parking requirements eliminated for ADUs, allowing an ADU and a junior ADU to be built on the ashes of a single-family lot, and flat-out allowing ADUs in areas zoned for single-family homes. What we've got are supervisors doing whatever the state wants to get their debt dollars. And if the state doesn't do what the federal government wants, then they don't get their money. It's a whole lot of mafia extortion going on, and somebody needs to finally grow an ethical spine and just say no for once because it's destroying housing and property rights, and I'm tired of it. You guys need to stop creating this housing crisis because that's what's really going on, and everyone sees right through it. If the United Nations, the Jenna 21, arrives, that's where this all really comes from. And it's sickening that to a dare... really comes from. And it's sickening that you would dare try to implement this stuff when you know it's destroying housing.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next caller.
Good afternoon, Board. Kathleen Lippett here. I'd like to point out that San Diego County has spent more on homeless programs than any other municipality, creating bureaucracies that have failed to stem the tide of homelessness. San Diego continues to blame a lack of permanent supportive housing on, on, on a lack of homes. However, it's the result and it's the end stage of social and drug problems, not the cause. San Francisco tried to address homelessness with Housing First strategies. Their program resulted in crime, death, and chaos. 25% of tenants died. 21% returned to homelessness. 27% were lost as follow-up. San Francisco's homeless population increased by 56%. There are some successful homeless programs, but they require clients and tenants to remain sober. However, the standard of sobriety made them ineligible for state funding. California seems to prefer costly strategies that grow large bureaucracy. Providing homes is a short-term, uninspired, expensive strategy that misses the opportunities to address the dependent variables and root causes that grow the pipeline of homelessness. Elites typically ignore how the shutdowns and mask mandates of COVID imposed on the public continue to, to, to result in mental health problems that also contribute to homelessness. Don Hopkins reported that zero lives were saved during the shutdown, and instead, the economy was destroyed, educational delays and deficiencies continued and will continue to grow for decades. California's, anyway, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. And Chairwoman Vargas, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you. What we're going to do first is we're going to hear public comment for closed session. So turn it over to the clerk for that.
Thank you, Chairwoman Vargas. We have four total requests to speak on closed session. We have one individual in person and three requesting to speak by phone. We will begin with the in-person speaker. I'd like to invite Alan C. You'll have two minutes to address the board. Calling Alan C. And final call for Alan C. We will now hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. Like to remind the callers, they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we'll begin with our first caller.
Choose me as a friend, and I'll be loyal till death. Choose me as an enemy, and I'll cut you down at all ends. This is truth. So finally, more fun closed session cases. With no live video feed, as Alan C. has pointed out, should exist for purposes of transparency. But of course, we're all used to a very transparent lack of honesty. Casey D., I assume we're about Nathan's dirty deeds. He's not actually important enough to mention any more than has already been done, because he's just another cog in the wheel. Apparently a murder wheel, according to Bryant. Nathan's replaceable and expendable, but he'll be sure to move on up in the world of real criminals who never see the monkey bars they truly deserve. Casey is about choosing a new CAO from who knows where. They refuse. Just make sure I gotta be done with it. And Casey, it's Brenda Argalade versus the County of San Diego and two officer does. Brenda is representing her 16-year-old son Alan, who is dead. In 2021, Alan was in juvenile hall for four months. One day, staff checked Alan into the emergency room of the onsite clinic due to allegations of fentanyl use. Two days later, Alan was found on his cell phone with no visible signs of life. Alan's mother Brenda alleges that the officers were deliberately indifferent to Alan's medical needs and failed to take reasonable measures to address, abate, or reduce the risk of harm, and that there was an absence of proper safety checks, and that there was overall negligence causing wrongful death. Brenda also said no one at the facility even responded to her multiple calls about her son. Another sad case in the county. And by the way, Nora, I watched you on the news yesterday. Congratulations. You got to be careful. Censorship of speakers could lead to another case for me to read one day. I hope not, because we already have way too much corruption. You guys are paying millions and millions, pretty much every Tuesday meeting, it sounds like.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
You know who I am. You guys, all the things you're doing are going to lead to litigations. And yeah, the anticipated litigation for BND, it's quite interesting that you're just leaving that so big. Love your transparency. And conference labor negotiations with the Department Sheriff Probation and Department of Invaders Association. Man, all those are corrupt, and you're going to give them more money just to beat people? Is that why the sheriff is standing right there? Funny that, hey, Sarge, you were standing there when there were speakers, and then you left the room. You guys' intimidation of people and what you did to Consuelo yesterday, it's quite funny because the cameras were there, right? All of those news cameras. So you couldn't take her out into the hall and have Gonzalez beat her to a pulp? Oh, while he's exonerated. It's ridiculous what you guys engage in. You're totally engaging in treason. It's insane. But the whole public employment for the CAO replacement, you better start over because Nathan should never have any say in that. And if Cynthia Chavez gets anywhere near that position, you guys are going to have to answer to why you put Nathan's person in, although you know that he's corrupt. Every single one of you are. You engage in things that are silencing the people but in a way to intimidate them. That's why you had the sheriff sit there and watch them and hold their hands on their guns to intimidate the people to keep us from speaking. It's not going to work. You'll have to kill me to get me out. And I'm sure Gonzalez would like to do that now that he's so proud that he beat women and was exonerated for doing it. He shouldn't be in that building. He shouldn't be near people. He shouldn't be near women. And if he ever touches me again, or anybody else, you guys are going to start a war within the county. Oh, Sergeant, what? What? What are we going to do? What are we going to do? That's why you want to take every gun.
Thank you. Your time is up. And Chairwoman Vargas, that concludes public comment on this item.
We're going to go ahead and do an unagenda public comment.
Thank you, Chairwoman Vargas. We have eight remaining requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda. They are all coming via phone. So for those that have requested to speak via phone, if you could please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you, and we will give you a moment to do so. We, we will now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, again, you'll be unmuted. You'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. Again, like to remind the callers that they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we will begin with our first caller.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Ann Riddle here. I wanted to follow up on the comments I made to item five yesterday on the consent item regarding the programs that you're proposing that will increase the number of mental health personnel here at the county. I applaud that action, and I appreciated the article that was in the newspaper this morning regarding what you are suggesting. As I mentioned yesterday, I shared this information with several of my children and grandchildren for whom I thought it would be applicable. However, last night, they called to my attention, and I noticed the news article this morning was, had the same problems. It doesn't identify any next steps. People who might be interested, who would they contact? I think any media that goes out, this would be the most appropriate item. And I was taken with District Three Supervisor's comments about this proposal being in the right direction, but we want to focus on long-term solutions. And I, too, want to keep our focus there. And this long-term solution, though wonderful, is only that. It's a long-term solution. Right now, we need solutions for dealing with why we are looking at such poor mental health here at the county. By any standard here in the city and counties of San Diego, mental health has suffered. Some of it related to COVID, but I'd like to respectfully suggest that some of it's been associated with drug use, to which we have a kind of enabling approach, particularly as it applies to marijuana businesses, whom the data suggests their products are really problematic for our mental health and physical health of our young people. Instead of looking at tail-end solutions, let's look upfront and look at upstream solutions and see what we can do about eliminating...
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
Good morning. My name is John Bottorf with CleanersForKids.org. As I commented earlier, we call on the county to immediately stop the sale, use, and storage of leaded aviation fuel at all airports in the county. There is no safe level of lead. Lead permanently damages children's brains, and lead exposure is the number-one cause of fatal heart attacks in the U.S. Lead harms public health and wildlife. Unleaded aviation fuel is available now, approved by the FAA, with no engine modifications needed for the aircraft. CleanersForKids.org invites the Board of Supervisors, staff, and all to have detailed and specific technical conversations with us and our consultant. This can't wait till 2030. Four of the top 100 lead-pluting airports in the country are in our county. According to EPA data, over 5,000 pounds of lead is dumped into the air of our county every year from these aircraft. Remember, there is no safe level of lead. Please direct staff to prioritize getting leaded aviation fuel out of all airports in San Diego County. Other cities and counties have already made this change. Please protect our children and their future and get the lead out. You accepted $5.1 million yesterday to stop lead in the county. Please use that to stop leaded aviation fuel and to educate the public on the dangers and sources of lead, and how people can protect themselves and get resources, especially testing. For more information on the dangers of lead, along with resources and infographics created by our Masters of Public Health and Environmental Law interns, please go to our Team Five Get the Lead Out page on our website. Also, stop leasing county land to West Coast Tomatoes in Oceanside, who have documented worker violations and sprays toxic pesticides 100 feet from homes. They use over 90,000 pounds of over 70 pesticides every year. Many banned in other countries. They are poisoning people and children in their own homes. Pesticides are toxic and deadly, and you must take action to protect children by stopping the lease of county land to West Coast Tomatoes. We have commented for years on this, along with phone calls and emails. Please reach out to us.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
Kathleen Lippett here. Good afternoon again, Board of Supervisors. I would like to address a Prop 65 warning reminder that has come out from the Health, California Science for Healthy California regarding marijuana smoke. Marijuana smoke exposure is on the Proposition 65 list because it can cause developmental harm and cancer. During pregnancy, smoking marijuana and being heavily exposed to marijuana smoke can harm the development of the child, and it may affect their birth weight, the behavior, and learning ability. Smoking marijuana and being exposed to marijuana smoke may also increase the risk of cancer. Prop 65 requires businesses to determine if they must provide a warning about significant exposure to the listed chemicals in Prop 65. Marijuana smoke contains several thousand different chemicals, some of which are already on the Prop 65 list. Chemicals that can affect the baby when the mother is exposed during pregnancies, such as THC delta-9, which may affect behavior, learning ability, and susceptibility to drug addiction in offspring. Other chemicals that cause cancer and reproductive harm, such as benzene, benzopyrene, butadiene, cadmium, carbon monoxide, hexavalent, chromium, formaldehyde, lead, mercury, and nickel. Many of these chemicals are also in tobacco smoke, which is on the Prop 65 list and has causing cancer and birth defects. Please give marijuana smoke the same attention that you have tobacco. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. We'll go to the next caller.
Good morning, Chair Vargas and Supervisors. My name is Becky Rapp. I wanted to take this opportunity to update you on a very important bill, AB 1207, titled the Cannabis Candy Child Safety Act. California, along with the rest of the nation, is experiencing a drastic increase in children being rushed to the emergency department due to accidental ingestion or overconsumption of psychoactive marijuana products that often mimic some of their favorite brands of candy, soda, or snacks. The bill will honor the promise and intent of Prop 64 to keep marijuana and its products out of the hands and bodies of our children. The bill clearly prohibits marijuana products, food, packaging, and marketing that are attractive to children and youth. AB 1207 will also follow Prop 31's example by prohibiting flavored, inhaled marijuana products known to initiate youth use, as seen with Juul and other tobacco companies. This bill is supported by dozens of organizations, such as the California American Academy of Pediatrics, the American College of Emergency Physicians, and the Public Health Institute, along with the California PPA. It was heard last week in the Assembly Business and Professions Committee, at which it was approved, and now will be heard by the Appropriations Committee, starting now through May 10. I ask that you please email the Appropriations Committee, sending a letter of support. The committee does not have public comment, and so your letter is crucial. The City of Encinitas is the first in the county to publicly support the bill, and parents like me would like to see the county take this step as well. It's crucial that you join in the effort of protecting children from drug...
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
You know who I am. Why is the video on the nod of you guys? You could all be gone. But it's funny because you want to silence the intelligent just to protect and not offend the stupid. And so you guys, we are your oversight committee. You don't like us coming in and holding you accountable for the things that we're supposed to be doing that for, yet you want us to comply with all of your regulation and your oversight committee. You know, we don't get paid for this. You guys do, and we do it because we actually care. And Joel, you had somebody come in yesterday, Tasha, okay? Tasha Williamson, a BLM organizer who threatened La Mesa with arson attacks, and then it actually happened because she didn't get her demands met when a young man was arrested who was black in La Mesa, and she threatened there would be violence, and there was. And it's great to know that you support that, Joel, because you guys sit here and act like we're the type of people like that. We're not burning down the cities or looting things like these people that you support and bring on to these proclamations with you. You guys hold us at bay, you stick the police on us, you have us beaten to silence us, although you let people like this get a proclamation, and you support them. And they're doing what you claim that we are. You say that we're terrorists, and you're allowing them to burn down cities, and then you support them, Joel? It's despicable. But it just shows where you guys are at. You have to silence us because the truth hurts so fucking bad, doesn't it, Nora? When we call out Sandag and your whole UN agenda, we see you. You think that we're stupid. We're not. God is watching you and everything that you're doing. So when you invoke God like that, God bless you. It's ridiculous, Nora. You don't even have a relationship with God. If you did, you wouldn't do any of this.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
Audrey Reynolds, founder and president of Saving Horses, Inc. I've been rescuing horses for 16 years. I'm a horse expert, and today I'm advocating for the neglected horses in San Diego County that do not have a voice, and to inform you of the inadequacy of our County Department of Animal Services, and more importantly, their director, Kelly Campbell. of Animal Services, and more importantly, their director, Kelly Campbell, who has no previous shelter or law enforcement experience, nor does she understand the mind of the animal hoarder. In 2020, I informed her of extreme neglect at a horse sanctuary in Julian. Three DAS visits this facility in 2020 and again in 2021 unearthed multiple cases of neglect and emaciation, yet no action was taken. I even offered to pay for an equine veterinarian to lead the 2021 investigation, but I was turned down. On this visit in 2021, euthanasia was recommended for several horses, but there was no follow-up. I forwarded the report on this investigation to Bob Berber, retired LA animal prosecutor who wrote the investigative protocol for animal control officers to follow. He called this a botched investigation, and he spoke with Kelly Campbell. He offered her training, expert training for her department, but she turned him down. I informed Campbell of 20 dogs at the Julian property, yet no officer ever saw them. They're unvaccinated, they're unlicensed, and there's no kennel permit. Campbell said she would donate vaccines. That's right, go ahead, enable the hoarder. On 9/29/22, DAS wouldn't even respond to multiple calls from Julian Sheriff Sergeant Vale, who witnessed gross neglect on the property. Recently, CBS 8 News had there two stories of horse neglect happening in North County and Escondido. The Escondido case has been open for years. Neighbors were frequently calling and stern for the welfare of the horses, yet with no improvement of living conditions for the horses mandated by DAS, consequently, the situation recently became quite grave. Then an older emaciated mayor died, a slow painful death in a pool of mud on a property of 60 horses in Rancho Santa Fe, many of which were victims of the owner's neglect. There was no necropsy on the dead mayor, and no county equine veterinarian was on this case. What will be done? Will the horses again be left at the hands of the abuser? Will the shelter lobby?
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
Truth, regarding yesterday's meeting, Nora and Jim, the chicken dance song is what happens when you guys don't make time to discuss the real issues that you buried into the consent calendar. And Nora, you said you never forget the Pledge of Allegiance. That's great, but you actually did forget it the March 24 Sandag meeting. But what's important to remember is not going through the motion, but to honor the meaning of the word. For example, "to a republic" is about our country having a republican form of government, not a democratic form. The real definition of a Democrat is one who supports a democracy. Here's what founder James Madison said in The Federalist Papers, Number 10, quote, "Democracies have ever been spectacles of turbulence and contention, sound incompatible with personal security or the rights of property, as short in their lives as they have been violent in their deaths. A republic, a government in which representation takes place, promises a cure for which we are seeking," end quote. That's what we've been missing. And lastly, Joel, you had some nerve pretending to care about sexual assault on women with the "not me" FC proclamation. How can you say you care about rape to women when you gave $70,000 to the YMCA in San T to add doors as a justification to continue to allow men to change clothes and shower in the same space as women and girls? But if that solution is really so great, then why couldn't you, or the San T City Council, just be honest and be loud and proud about it, and you guys came up with a plan months ago, rather than shoving it into the consent calendar with 21 other items? The reality is, Joel, you have aided in putting women and girls at risk of sexual assault. And I'm tired of career compromisers like yourself, Joel, not taking our safety seriously or promoting terrorists. Maybe you're expecting women and girls to never forget their "not me" FC arms, even in a YMCA locker room, in order to ensure their safety. You tell me, Joel, because I don't approve [bleep] sneaky.
Thank you. Your time is up. And Chairwoman Vargas, that concludes the request for non-agenda public communication this morning.
Thank you. And so we are going to, this actually concludes the session, and we're doing, we're going to go to closed session now. Okay? Thank you.
The board will now recess into closed session to continue consideration of those matters listed under Item 29 on yesterday's agenda. If there are any reportable actions, they will be reported out after the conclusion of closed session today.